Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting Wednesday, May 21st. Let's go and get started this morning. Commissioner Crean, can you lead us some prayer and pledge, please?
Dear Lord, Father, we thank you for your day. We thank you for putting us in the position that we were in to help serve and lead in our county. We ask you for continuance, guidance, and protection all day, our lives, while we keep you first. Jesus mighty name, amen.
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 To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
Sir, first, well, Mr. Moron, do we have anything to amend the agenda with this morning?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. In front of you, you'll see Erin had a late ad item from the Sheriff's Department about the JAG grant. So she has a new updated report that's in front of you that she did last night. On my report, I had a late ad, but I actually had that on there yesterday, I think by four, the latest, maybe. That's, that's your choice, sir, whether you wanted to take public comment on that late ad. It's a letter of support for Aynar. You and I had that discussion about that. And I don't think Attorney Shula had any late ads amended. He did not, so I believe that's it.
I don't know that it's going to lead to action, but I would like to at least add it to the agenda. Since Mr. Steele is going to be here, then we can at least have a discussion about the food trailer area. I don't know that it'll lead to any board action, but I would like to formally put it on the agenda. And that was late as of yesterday. I was still talking with him and talking with the property owner late yesterday.
Good, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those ads.
So we have a motion to approve the amended agenda. By Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we're gonna pay the county bills and approve the minutes from the regular meeting 11, 19, 20, 24 that have been revised, and our meeting from 4:09 of 25. We have a motion to approve. The heat motion, right? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crean, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, under public comments, I only have the one. Ms. Rigmar, you're wanting to speak at that certain agenda item, correct? All right. Were there any others, Mr. Moron?
Double check one more time. I just did, but better be safe than sorry. Electronic speaker card sent, sir.
All right. I see there was a report from Ms. Daniels, but there's no action items, Michael?
That's correct, and she, but that was text me this morning. She's home with a flu. She said, give her a couple of days, you need her call, but give her a couple of days.
So if you have any questions, Commissioners, just contact Ms. Daniels in a couple of days and address those with her. Mr. Steele, is he appearing online?
Yes, he is.
All right, he's up next. Good morning, Justin.
Hey, Justin, you're still muted. There he goes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The county received an application or a request to build a driveway over some property on Bayshore Drive that would allow access to a parcel. In order for the applicant to apply to DEP and Army Corps, they need county approval to use county right-of-way. So this is just asking for the county to consider providing the authorized signature for them to apply for these permits.
Mr. Steele, so this is one we've been working on for a little while. When they first talked to the county, they just wanted us to clear it for them, but we said, yeah, no, we can't do that, not without permission from another entity because of the wetlands. So that's the process they're trying to follow, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure and clarify that.
Do we need, Mr. Chairman, do we need to do this in two separate motions? Because it's different.
I think one motion would be sufficient.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right. And Mr. Steele, I had added to the agenda, and I'm not trying to hang around at anybody. We've been having this ongoing discussion about the vacant piece of land that's going to be improved enough to use it for food vending.
Yes, sir.
And I will say this at the outset, and so it is what it is. As, as the Commissioner of the District, when I first started getting calls, I just didn't know about it. But I also was under the understanding that it was, it's not really a commercial site plan because there's not, they're not adding buildings, if I can say it the simplest way. You know what I mean? They're not doing as some of the restaurants are, they're not having to add a foundation, they're not having to add buildings. It's, it's really just improving the parking lot is what they're doing. So when I first started getting questioned, my response to some of the residents probably didn't help the situation. Because I said, as far as I understand, if there's anything that's on commercial property, it has to have a commercial site plan. And that wound up not being true per our, our ordinances and the things that you sent us in an email. So I wanted to make sure we, we addressed that so the public can know. I did talk to Mr. Toronto yesterday, and his question to me was, he says, Ricky, do we make any other, or have we made any other food truck have a commercial site plan? And of course, the answer is no. We haven't made another food truck have a commercial site plan. So I did talk to him about some issues with the neighbors we're trying to work through. That's just a he and I kind of thing. But I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of kind of where that conversation has went and why it is. And I wasn't trying to cut you off. If there's anything you want to add, sir, we can do that at this time.
No, sir, you pretty much summed it up very well. Of course, it's always great if neighbors are willing to work together to kind of address any issues that they have.
Yeah, well, maybe that's where it'll wind up. We'll see where that happens. I'm still trying to work with all involved. And I do know that there was, I'll be honest, and I know I'm pure on record. When I was talking with Mr. Toronto, I talked more about the fence than I did anything else. And I said, I understand it's on your property line, but it's also about a foot away from another building. Now, is that something the county missed years ago when they allowed that property to be sold separate from the rest of it? Probably so. It probably is because that restaurant is built right on the property law. And nobody that's owning those two pieces of property now created that. It was already there. So we're, you know, we're trying to work through that. We're trying to make sure there's not a fire hazard. So I just wanted to make sure and share that with the public via this meeting today. Anyone else have any questions or concerns about it that we didn't cover?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I do want to ask, and I know Mr. Moron is going to be discussing this on his report, but while we have Justin on the line, I spoke with Justin and I spoke to Mr. Moron about this. I know that we have a new county planner coming in June. And I know he, we're updating our land comp plan and our zoning ordinances, and what I would like is, because I got discrepancies on how the process used to be, where we had a public hearing or a workshop where people could voice their concerns. I'm all about that. I'm all good with that. But I feel like when it comes to the county planner's job, whenever they have something that comes before them, that they feel like it goes, you know, like, for example, if property is on commercial, and it follows our comp plan, and it follows our zoning codes, and they're doing something related to that zone, then I feel like that the county planner should have the say, yes or no. It shouldn't come, every little thing that happens in this county don't necessarily, in my opinion, have to come before this board. If we did that, we'd be here all the time. We have a county planner for that. I know, Justin, and I appreciate your time with us here, Justin. I know you're going to transition and work with, I guess, Bree for a couple of months to get her transition, but I want a process, a streamlined process for continuity, where there's no confusion from the property owner when they come to apply, or from our public, or from this board. And I'm not saying that to say anything against you, how the process has been in the past. We just went from a county planner that was here for many, many years. Things have changed. You've been here, you've probably seen some of those changes in the short time. And I just want Bree to come in with basically a flat, this is what we do, this is the process, so there's no question. That way, if the public reaches out to her or you, y'all know the answer, and people reach out to us, we know the answer. Because I also got those calls, and I was confused. I was looking at things, and I was looking at an incorrect thing, and I told the property owner something different than what I should have, because that's what research I saw. So, and I corrected myself, but we just need to know and have a streamlined way of doing things as we move forward, especially with getting a new planner. That way, there's no question on things. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, and I don't know, Mr. Steele, I don't know if there's a way to, because again, when I spoke, just like the Commissioner just said, the first thing I said probably wasn't accurate, so I had to readdress that. The, the only thing I will say is, is there a way for us, and I'm not trying to create something that you guys can't do, is there a way for us to have anything to do with commercial site plan where we know what would require a full review versus a staff review? You know what I mean? Is that even possible? Or is that too hypothetical?
Yes, sir, we can, it's, it's pretty much laid out in the land development code. We can bring that to your attention, either in a memo or just working with Bree, we can make sure that she's aware of what, what section she should be reviewing.
I do have to, just as a matter of course, to take care of what I'm doing, I did have a resident ask me to read into the record an email from them. Let me see if I can pull that up real quick. It's concerning, this subject matters, sir. I'm just trying to follow the wishes of the, of the business owner.
And Mr. Chairman, while you're looking for that, Justin will be here at your next meeting to present the draft version of the updated comp plan and zoning ordinance. We're still on, Justin, you had that surprised look for a second there.
Yeah, you said zoning ordinance. That one was a little more complicated, and it's not quite where we would like it to be yet.
Oh, okay. So just the comp plan is what you'll do at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, so this, this email was received from Ms. Donna K. Schaber. Her and her husband own the, an adjacent property. Said, as we discussed Friday, I, along with the owners of the Beach Pit Restaurant and Mango Mites, have significant concerns regarding the proposed development of the food trailer court on First Pine, uh, First Street and Pine Avenue. When we develop and open our business in 2022, we adhere to every rule and guideline required by Franklin County for commercial development. It appears, however, this new project has passed, bypassed many of the same standards. Below are some of the specific concerns I would like to address. A detailed and comprehensive site plan that was not submitted. A county employee reportedly approved this development without properly notifying or consulting the Commissioners. The public was not informed of this proposed development, thereby eliminating the opportunity for residents and business owners to raise questions or concerns prior to approval, which undermines the long-term investments made by local taxpaying business owners, as well as bypassing the transparent procedures that protect our community from arbitrary and inconsistent development. The drawing you provided is not to scale and lacks critical details, including the actual dimensions of the 10 designated parking spaces. It's unclear how it's determined that 10 spaces would be sufficient for five food trailers, considering each trailer may have at least two employees, effectively occupying all available spaces without accommodating customers. The portion of the drawing indicated parking in the alley at the end of the property includes trees that are not located on the owner's property. As you mentioned, no county approval has been given for the removal of the trees that might be on county property. If they remain, it is doubtful that 10 parking spaces can be accommodated. So I will say too, when talking to Mr. Toronto, I didn't remember to ask him about the parking spaces for the employees. But I did ask him about porta-potties and things such as that, and he assured me they would be one on-site for workers only, not for the general public. So I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. Anyone else have any questions or concerns about it?
I do, but I probably should not say it.
What is it?
I said, I do, but I probably shouldn't say it.
Oh, well, you're good. I'm not trying to make you know that.
I just want the public to be aware, you know, when, when a property is zoned a certain way, that's why we have zoning codes, that's why we have zoning rules. If it's zoned a certain way, as long as you're putting on that property what it's zoned for, there's nothing anyone can say about it, in my opinion. I mean, that's why we have zoning codes, is it not? And I understand that, you know, there are concerns when things come, but, you know, that's the whole purpose of having these rules. And, you know, it's, I called Justin, I said, I agree with you, you know, you shouldn't have to call, we shouldn't get emails, well, we should get emails, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying if, if it's zoned a certain way, we have no control of what the, that's that property owner's right to put whatever they want on that property, as long as it goes within our zoning code and land comp plan. And that's, that's just how I feel about it. Period. I mean, because if we say no, just because we get community input and there's concerns, I'm all about listening to the concerns, but at the end of the day, if we say no, just because nobody else wants it, then that property owner could sue us for not allowing them to do what they want with their property, right?
May I jump in here?
You got the authority.
Send the attorney, Justin, go ahead.
I guess I would defer to the attorney to some degree, but when it's in the land development code and it matches the zoning, what you're primarily looking for, this would be considered a quasi-judicial matter, and you'd only be looking that to make sure that the site plan matches what the zoning requirements are. So yes, ma'am, you are correct in that.
Yes, it's really a ministerial duty. When someone has a principal use of land that they want to make, which means you're, when it's a principal use, you're allowed to make that use as a matter of right. You just check off the boxes. You know, do you meet the setbacks? I mean, if you need a variance, then you have to go to the Board of Adjustment. But if you check off all the boxes and you don't need a variance for a special exception, yeah, it has to be approved. I mean, we went through this with the big box store on the island 20 years ago. I mean, my goodness, the uproar over that was tremendous. But it met the code, so it had to be approved. And, you know, there was a lot of fallout from that. With unhappy people on the island that did not want the big box store, but it met the code, so it had to be approved. And it's the same thing here.
Attorney, show the other thing, and it has to do with this, but it's really not about this. It's more to the spirit of what Commissioner Ward was saying. And it might not be received well, but it's meant to be, it's intended to be well. It's not this Commission's job to put people in business or keep them out of business.
Correct.
I mean, you know, I go back to what I've been doing for 20-plus years. When somebody else wanted to put a parts house on East Point, Mr. Hendrick didn't come before the board and say, hey, we got that, we're good, you don't need another parts house. No, he came over there and talked to me and said, hey, look, you need to make sure you take care of everybody that comes through the door. You know what I mean? It didn't. And, and they, they used the property for what it was allowed for. So he didn't try to make a fuss and keep somebody out of business, you know what I mean? It just, anyway. It's just, sometimes it's a never-ending thing, but it's really not this board's job to put people in business or keep them out of business.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to emphasize too, I don't, I, I enjoy reading my emails. I enjoy contacting people and discussing things with them. But I want them to understand that, I mean, we, as Commissioners, we all do that. We all enjoy and listen to feedback, and we're, and listen, we are all listening to your concerns and care about your concerns and your issues, but there but there are a lot of times we can't make everybody happy. There's, we can't make everybody happy. That's just, that's just, uh, 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 you just can't ask for us to do that, but, but we're gonna do, I feel like the right thing. And I just want people to know this, not that we're not listening to them. We just have to, by law, follow a rule and codes that we have in the county that we, as commissioners, that the commissioners before us put on the books. And it's not that we can't, I just want people to know that that we can't always give them what they want because we have to follow a rule and a law. And that's just the way I feel about it, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are y'all working it out with Mr. Toronto?
We're doing the best we can. Now, I still, we'll, we'll see how we can address it. I still say that that fence, I understand all the circumstances. I still think that fence might be causing the fire hazard. But we're trying to, because, you know, when he was talking to me, he said, well, I don't want to feel like I'm being penalized. So there's nobody used to think about penalizing, do we? We're just trying to get neighbors to work together to make sure everybody's safe. So we're, we're still working on that. I don't, I don't, I think that's a fair representation of where we're at.
He's a good guy.
He is.
He already involved, is, they just have different opinions on things.
But I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Justin, because I did contact Justin and asked him to reach out to those property owners with the concerns and questions, and he did do that. So thank you, Justin. I appreciate that.
He did, because I had someone tell me he did. Mr. Steele, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Erin Griffith?
Good morning, commissioners. How are you all doing?
We're doing good. How you doing?
Good. Um, you have my report in front of you. There is, um, there's previously, uh, let's see here, nine action items, and then I had my board information. Um, just this morning, I added items number 11 and 12, which were, uh, late adds for some of, some grants for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, since they were late adds, uh, do you want to, let's, does the board want to try to consider these all as one, or do y'all have any y'all want to pull and discuss separately?
I don't have any y'all want to pull out. It's on, I don't know how she's got it.
Anyone else? So, Ms. Erin, it would be one through nine and then on the supplemental, one, oh, I'm sorry, you got it, you got it numbered on here, right? Then 10, 11, and 12?
Yep, yep, 11 and 12 would be the late add items. And then, um, item number 10 was just board information.
Okay, so 11 was about the Sheriff's JAG grant. Actually, 11 and 12, both are.
Yep.
Okay, so I, since the board is acting like they want to do this all as one, I now call for any public comment that wants to discuss 11 and 12, which were the late add items. Anyone in the room? Mr. Merle, can you check online?
Anyone attending via Zoom would like to discuss late add items, 11 and 12, Erin's report. It's about the Sheriff's, um, JAG grant. Indicate by raising your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, what's the pleasure of the board with, uh, items one through 12?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes.
Uh, Erin, on, uh, your board, the board action on budget requests letters to the department, did you take that out of your amended report intentionally?
Um, no, it should still be there.
It's in there.
Yeah, number four, number four, this page.
I don't, is it on here?
We don't have it.
I don't have it on this.
On the iPad, I have it on the iPad.
I got it on, uh.
It's not showing on this printed out version, Mike. Not, not a number four, here's from three to five.
No, it's, no.
It's on the iPad, but it's not here.
Both of them.
It's not on there.
Oh, okay.
I think it was missing.
I don't get it either.
Just on this one.
No, I'm sorry, it might not have printed correctly and the, for some reason, the copy is so. It's still.
It's on this one, yes. I just wanted to make sure she didn't take it off.
No, she did not.
No, yeah, it's still there.
That's more of a printing error. That's not you.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve.
So, pleasure of the board?
He got a motion. He just made a motion.
Okay, thank you. I told you on the left side, bro, I might not hear you.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crean down there.
I'm taking it, ma'am.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
We all second.
All in favor? All right. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Erin, any, uh, updates that you want to share?
Uh, yes, actually, um, the Landarc EMS station, um, I met with them onsite on Monday. Uh, they were supposed to have started doing some of the, um, site work clearing, um, actually beginning yesterday. Um, and then at some point, you know, when they, whenever they get ready to actually start, uh, the vertical construction aspect, we'll actually have a groundbreaking ceremony onsite. Um, so stay tuned for that. Um, we also, the Armory Convention Center project, uh, we did have a pre-bid construction meeting, which was held last week and it was well-attended by contractors. Uh, the bids are due June 3rd. CR 67 Phase 4, we're also out for bids for construction and CEI. Um, the bids are also due on June 3rd on that one. Um, Restore SGI Stormwater, the pre-construction meeting was held. The county is still awaiting a formal notice to proceed from the U.S. Treasury. The earliest possible notice to proceed date will now be June 9th. Unfortunately, the Treasury timeline has delayed the project's notice to proceed into the peak summer season. The county has been in discussions with the awarded contractor and the CEI engineers to delay the construction start on disruptive portions of the project scope until after August 1st. Um, an engineering diagram is attached to this report, which provides an overview of the location of the new stormwater pipes, inlets, and outfalls, the areas of roadway resurfacing, and the additional retention pond. Um, the Apalachicola Artificial Reef Association Cooperative Reef Project with Franklin County and the FWC is out for bid now and the bid is due June 13th.
All right, Ms. Ms. Erin, on that stormwater project?
Yes.
Since the, we are where we are with it, uh, thank you for mentioning that they're, they're, uh, where they're at. Does anything in our process allow us to go ahead and alleviate some of the initial monies that this contractors had to spend to get the material? Instead of waiting, waiting, waiting?
Yes, yes, from what we understand, we will be able to actually reimburse them for stored materials, uh, because all of the material is, of course, stockpiled onsite, so, um, that's a significant, you know, cash outlay on the contractor's behalf, and a lot of it was, um, special order materials. Um, so yes, it's our understanding that we will be able to actually reimburse for the materials, um, that are currently being stored.
Right, okay. Yeah, and 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 the ongoing discussion that I drug you in and made you a part of a couple of weeks ago about, uh, when we do start trying to do in such a way that it's going to be least impactful on the businesses as a summertime.
Yes, for sure. Yep, yep, and that, that's, um, that's actually the county's goal by waiting until, um, you know, after August 1st, because that will push it into, um, at least we'll be outside of peak summer season. And we had originally hoped that this project would start in January, but that did not happen with the Treasury timeline.
Are you kidding me? We originally wanted this project to start 40 years ago when we started on it. But yeah, yes, ma'am, that's been a problem, but thank you, Ms. Erin.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Erin? Thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you all.
Mr. Merle?
Hey, all right, commissioners, uh, I have two action items, but the second one is kind of a late add. Let me remove this spotlight here.
Did that letter support for an air?
Yes, so do you want me to just do one by one? Because everything else is a discussion items, it's not.
Well, let's go ahead and call for public comment on the in-air thing, that way we get that out of the way.
Yeah, there're just two letters of support. Uh, Commissioner Ward, I will just bring special attention to the first one to make sure that, um, this ARPC application for a study for workforce housing is working with
Team Franklin.
Team Franklin, so just want to bring that, okay, sir, um.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Rito was at our meeting, our Team Franklin meeting last time we had it, and so we're working in conjunction with them on this. So I think, again, collectively working together, hopefully we'll get something happening.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, uh, it it does make a difference. That's where the ARPC is really able to help, because they all know dollars to go after that we may or may not know about. Uh, that's how the whole Franklin 98 project come about, was interactions between this board and the Regional Planning Council. You know, that, that wound up being a, a $15 million project, and we had a local contractor get the bid. That, that's a big deal.
It's a big deal. Um, I'll make a motion to approve this letter. I guess, we're gonna do it on consent, okay.
I'm sorry, you wanted to call for comment?
She's already made a motion. We have a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Enson, the motion was made by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, now, uh, before we discuss item number two, since it was a late add, I will call for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on it publicly, on the letter of support for an air? All right, Mr. Merle, check on Zoom, please.
Anyone online would like to comment on this before, it's a letter of support for the reserve? No hands raised.
All right, pleasure of the board?
Uh, okay, I was gonna say, I, you know more about this because Ms. Grove, Mrs. Grove came to you yesterday about this.
I don't know if it's, well, what I don't know, I don't know 100% about it. I don't know if it's, uh, something to do with Doge or if it's just a normal course of things.
Yeah.
But it's a letter of support to keep, uh,
For funding, right?
The federal funding.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Enson.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crean, and I think Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Mr. Merle?
Commissioners, item three, uh, you read the, the items I have, the bullet list I have there, basically. And I'm, I'm hoping that we have everything in order now, so FWC's workshop is on the 3rd at the Chapman Building. Um, I'm waiting for specifics from Devon. When I, when I get those, or whether or not I get those, I'm gonna go ahead and run it, I, I'm not, I post it to the, um, county's website. And yes, by then tomorrow, have a meeting with our archive company, and yes, the face, the county's Facebook page, yes. Yes, so I'll have those on there. Both will say that more than one commissioner may attend, so I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys will be covered. Because you, it seems to me, based on Devon's email, commissioners, that Devon is actually encouraging you guys to come to this one, because it seems like this is what he's going to be presenting to the, to the FWC commi- I know. You see my office in the back. FWC Commission coming up in August, commissioners? Yes, so it's, I think it's, it's.
Let me ask a clarifying question. The thing that the FWC is doing, is it bringing the commission here? Or they just have the meeting?
No, this is a workshop.
Workshop.
Okay.
Yeah.
No commission.
No, this is workshop.
Yeah, I.
Next commission meeting will be in August, and I think it's in Quincy.
Quincy, yeah, Quincy. We're still, I know what they said at the, at the meeting you guys attended, I, I know, we haven't.
Still pushing it.
Yeah, I haven't seen the evidence of that happening this year yet.
Well, their meetings are planned like a year out, right?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it may be, we may be a venue for next year.
We'll just keep pushing.
26.
Um, what, what time is that workshop? Take the call?
The most, yeah, have they?
But I think he said six, but I don't know if that's going to change or not, but I'll verify with Devon one more time before I post it.
I just want to make it on my calendar if I can make it on either.
All right, so is there anything about the EMS workshop we need to discuss?
Um, how did I escape from this? I'm sorry.
Because they're both happening close to the same time.
Oh, that's, digress, go on, getting over.
I'll help you out.
So, yes, also, thank you. So, yes, so the EMS workshop, I, I was gonna do it that Tuesday, I moved it to the Thursday. I want to make sure you guys have, that's clear in your calendar, so basically, FWC on Tuesday evening, County Commission on, on Wednesday morning, and then the EMS, uh, meeting here that evening at, at 6 o'clock. The workshop. I want to make sure everybody's good with that before I post that.
Michael, we need to make sure, when we do actually start posting on social media, that we announce this and make sure that members of the first responder community are, and, and, and fire departments.
Okay.
You know, are representatives from their departments, or at least knowing that we're gonna have that discussion.
First responders. Okay.
It's a busy week.
Yeah, commissioner.
Michael, so EMS workshop is on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so even I had it on my calendar, 3rd.
Yes, that, that, that's correct, that was original, but then we moved it for FWC.
They're gonna have 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Got to be good.
Busy week.
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I bring up something about the, uh, the voluntary fire department?
Yes.
Um.
So, everybody's good with number three? I can check it off? Okay, good.
We're not gonna make a motion, do we?
Yeah.
Not really, I just want to make sure you guys are good, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sanders.
Hey, that's okay, that's nothing, because I think we're gonna all, all agree. Um, at the last board meeting, the board decided to take it upon itself to put the, uh, to put the MSBE vote to this board. Uh, before we have any, now, this is just me. Before we have any meetings with the F, I mean, with the fire departments or anything, because I know we're gonna get public records requests from, is there a way that we can get all the information that I feel this board, and I know you would, you all would, uh, as far as financial and budget request and, and the ISO, uh, certification with the ratings letter, uh, the rosters of the, you know, fire departments and, and, and the contract that we want them to enter, just like Landarc did. And there's a couple more things.
Okay.
Is it gonna be possible that we could get this information up and request it from each of the departments before we start having these MSB workshops? Or you want to, how y'all want to take care of that, because that's a lot of information to be out there, and it needs to be out there before the, you know, we make a decision here on this, but.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, you go ahead. I just think it's important, if, if we're gonna be asking the public to, or they're not asking the vote now, but if we're asking them to support in this and, and basically give their input, I feel like it's important that they know what the financial outlook looks like in terms of, all right, we are asking us for this X amount of more out of our taxes, what is the money going to? Like, where are you standing right now? Why do you need this money? Show us how you need this money, yeah, to basically justify why. So I'm okay, I, I think that's a great idea, and I agree with you on that, and I was gonna bring it up, but you did, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just think that that's something that we do need to show our public, so that they're informed of where these volunteer fire departments' money's coming from, the money's going, and why they need this increase.
Well, that's, that's what these workshops are gonna do, anyway, isn't it?
But they weren't gonna have their financial.
We need to have the information available, not only to us, but to the people.
Yeah, so, wha- what I'm hearing is Commissioner Sanders basically wants this information ahead of time, give the county commission a chance to review, verify some of the information, and then we schedule the workshop, so that you were more prepared for the workshop.
And not only that, but we can ask questions. Well, you know, we may say a particular thing on there and say, well, why have you got this? Is this needed or what? But the ISO rating is very important, but the letter that comes with the rating is, is important too, because it gives kind of like guidelines to what they need to do to shore it up, to make it better. Because I know I still haven't, I still haven't got a decrease in my insurance rate.
So there's a letter that has that on it?
They have a letter too. They have this, uh, certification of the ISO rating, and then there's a letter that accompanies it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
That is interesting.
Always had that.
Okay, so my shopping list, so far, is financials. You want a roster of, of all the, the people, and, and on that roster, you want to know who's certified and not certified? I, I would just go ahead and put that, okay?
And there's a couple more things, but I want to get it set in my mind that I tell you right before I say it.
Okay.
But anyway.
Are you asking Attorney Schuler to go ahead and start creating draft contracts now to have them ready as part of the review?
That's what, that's what I was gonna add, and also add that for Attorney Schuler on the contract there, because if, if it is approved, then, you know, we've discussed this many times that we don't have no problem with our fire department signing, you know, contracts with the county that safeguards the fire department and safeguards the county also. So, I mean, it was just my way of thinking, because I've got a lot of people, well, what do they need to raise? I can't answer them. I can't answer them because I don't have nothing before me. So if I've got something before me, I can say, well, they need a new truck for this, or they need a, whatever, so. Do you need to make that a motion or just direct?
No, I would prefer a vote, if I'm going to be contacting various volunteers, including the cities, uh, I, I would prefer to have a motion and vote of the board directly, because so far you've only directed me to do that with Landarc, and that, that the contract has been negotiated and signed, and I plan on using that as the template.
Yep.
Uh, unless the board has other instructions for me, I think that worked out well with St. James Landarc, and it should work out well for everyone else, but I won't know until they receive it and they review it. And just so you know, St. George Island did request a copy of that. And since they made a public record request, I did give them the St. James Landarc contract. But if I'm going to be negotiating with them, I would prefer to have board direction and authority.
And one, one of the things that I want to discuss too, you know, or, or bring out to the board is the, um, the, their nonprofit status, to make sure that's currently state. And, uh, And there's several more things, but, I mean, this way, we'll have all of it right here, and the people can look at it and say, okay, well, now, this, this makes sense, they need this increase for this, because this is what we need, you know? So, I'd rather have that ahead of time, than get to the meeting and be flustered by it, you know? So, I'm gonna make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
All right, so we have the motion and the second. Can you please read back what we're talking about?
Yes, so, and I'd like to give a little room in the motion, in case another commissioner thinks of something, and say, hey, Michael, add this to the list. So, I'm gonna send out a letter to each of the volunteer fire departments, asking for their most recent financials, their current roster, which includes which ones are certified, and which one of the volunteers are certified, which are not. I will leave the draft contract up to Attorney Schuler, a true justification for this, not true, that's a detailed justification for the increase that they are requesting, and their nonprofit status. Anything else?
Well, there was mention about the ISO-
ISO stuff.
The ISO rating is what you want, okay?
Yeah, the current ISO rating of each department.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on this, can I just say something, it's, and, not really, I'm just gonna say what I gotta say about it, you know, I don't know what's happened in the past with this, I just know what I'd like to see going forward, but the way I look at it is, is this, number one, we should have financials already, they're using the people's money, that should be clear. You know, according to the supervisor of elections and Attorney Schuler from discussion, it's gonna cost to go to a public vote on this, would cost $30 something thousand dollars. Now, I've talked to some folks in the past, I believe that Landarc, I think it was Landarc, that MSBU money paid for the election, but I don't care if MSBU paid for it, or we paid for it, or whoever paid, it's still tax dollars. And in my mind, I think that that is the reason why we were elected, to make these hard decisions, whether, you know, the public agrees with a lot of the stuff we do, or don't agree, that's still our burden to carry.
Yep.
And we can explain that to whoever has a discrepancy with it, but, in saying that, I'm not a big fan of spending tax dollars, not only on an election, when we should be making that decision, but also, I'm not a big fan of giving any of the tax dollars out without some transparency, and I think that's, and I feel like that's the direction that all of us feel we need to go. Now, I know it's gonna be a growing pain, because the fire departments in the past have not had to be accountable, but I think going forward, that, in that way, it'll also get the public's trust in us for looking out after their pennies, but these fire departments gonna have to get in contract with us, and we're gonna have to be transparent on where that tax dollars is being spent. I don't care about their fundraising dollars, but if they're gonna use the public's money, I wanna know where it's going, because I can tell y'all this, and I can say it right now, I will not approve anything unless I see where they're spending that money. So, if the fire department, and I support the fire departments, but if they wanna, if they need this money to provide a better service for our community, I'm all for it, but you're gonna show me where it's gonna be spent, or I'm not, there will be one day, for sure.
That's the way I feel, Commissioner Amison, I feel that same way, and also, just to let you know, the rosters of the people, it is a requirement that they're supposed to turn that in every year, because we have workers' comp insurance on the firefighters, if they get hurt on the job and stuff, so it's something that's supposed to be in there, and I asked Erin, I said, do you get that every year? She says, some do, some don't. So, we need to make it a requirement where they do have to do that, because we are accountable for that, you know?
I agree.
Anything that, anything that anyone have to turn into the state, we should just get a copy as a matter of courtesy, concern.
But I just wanted to, since it's the only time we can talk together, I just wanted to let y'all know, that's where I feel that we-
I feel that same way, and that's why I, in my mind, if we would go tomorrow and say, okay, we're gonna have a public hearing for this tax right here, or this special benefit, if they don't have nothing to justify to me, to be able to vote for, that you can clearly see they need it to operate the fire safety standards on wherever in this county, how am I gonna be able to vote for that in good conscience, if I don't have nothing before me to look at?
Right.
So, that's the way I look at it, and that's why I brought it up, I didn't do it to cause any kind of rift toward nobody, or anything, because I am very thankful for all those volunteers and volunteers in this county, but at the same time, we are charged with looking after the tax dollars in Franklin County, and that's what we have to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I will hold off on scheduling anything until the board says, okay, Michael, we're comfortable with the information we have, now let's schedule the workshop.
Information first.
Okay, that'd be good.
The only thing I will add before we vote, and I know this is just under discussion, from talking to East Point Fire Department, they have three trucks on their current MSBU level, to replace, to have all the trucks on a 20-year replacement schedule, you gotta buy a truck every eight years. Currently, their total MSBU, all it could go to, it'd be buying a truck, they'd have no additional funds for nothing else.
Yeah.
So, you know what I mean, so that there is, and that's what we'll find out and see in some of the stuff, because a new truck's over half a million dollars.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Chairman, is the money still in the state budget for East Point's fire truck?
We think it is? I don't know if anybody knows where anything's at right now.
They don't even know where it is.
I do believe it is.
Well, it was in there at one time.
Yes, it is.
Because we had to spend a massive choice between St. Teresa and East Point, so that's what they did, they pulled out East Point, which I don't have no problem, because we're all accounting.
Speaking of trucks, Mr. Chairman, hey, Erin, would you jump, would you jump in here, Erin, and let the board know, when you contacted that company that does the leases for some of the equipment that Howard uses, what they told you about fire trucks versus EMS units?
Yes, actually, with, you know, the rolling lease purchase agreement that we have in place, actually with the road department, you know, dump trucks are actually something that has a really good secondary market, so vendors are usually willing to do that. That is the same situation as far as with fire trucks, fire trucks also have a good secondary market. I did ask them if they had any sort of, you know, rolling lease purchase program, where, you know, every, you know, one to two years, we would rotate out an ambulance, and they said, unfortunately, because they're such high mileage units and such heavy use, they said there wasn't really a secondary market for ambulances. With that being said, we would probably be stuck with just a regular old, either a re-chassis-ing program, or every couple of years, we would actually do a re-chassis upgrade for the ambulance, and then probably alternate with a completely new unit on the offside. So, probably every other year, we would be either doing a re-chassis, or buying a new ambulance.
So, with that said, I think it's a way, after the state decides what they're doing about the budget, and we have these MSBU workshops, maybe, we could start a program of some sort of assisting each fire department with a truck, maybe, a very long, long-term type project, but at least we have a plan moving forward to assist our fire departments with this lease-type situation.
Okay.
I just wanna bring that to your attention. Thanks, Erin.
All right, any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I got one, Attorney Schuler.
Yes, sir.
We mentioned contracts, how would this, I guess, you have to contact City of Caravelle and City of Appalachia Cola?
Well, there are six other VFDs that contracts will need to be entered into, Landarc-St. James has already been negotiated, approved by the board, and approved by the St. James Landarc Board, so I will contact each of the other six departments with the contact information that I have, and get that process started. I plan on starting it by saying, here's the contract with St. James Landarc, it's already been approved, please review this, and let me know if you approve it in toto, or if you have any proposed additions, or corrections, or deletions, and we'll go from there, I mean, it's a collaborative process. There are certain, and just like it was with Landarc-St. James, I mean, we started out with a 25-page document, and it got down to about 10 pages, but the essential terms are going to be, to a certain extent, non-negotiable, for example, financial reporting, financial auditing, there are certain just non-negotiables that they will have to agree to, in my opinion, obviously, that's ultimately up to board, but having required that of one volunteer fire department, it's going to be difficult not to require that of all departments, because it needs to be uniform reporting across the board, in my opinion. So, that's how I plan on approaching the process, Commissioner Crum, unless y'all, as individuals or as a board, have different directions for me.
Got you. Okay, I just wanted to know, because, you know, I know the City of Appalachia, they're on board, although, you know, they are requesting the MSBU, I just didn't know the process there, dealing with city commission with Caravelle and Appalachia Cola, with those two fire departments, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not going to be dealing directly with, and I'm sorry if I led you to think that by my comment, when I said dealing with the cities, I meant the volunteer VFDs that operate within the City of Caravelle and the City of Appalachia Cola, but I won't be negotiating with, directly with the elected officials, I mean, how the volunteer fire department for Appalachia interacts with their city commission, and same for Caravelle, I don't really think is relevant, because that's between those two entities, this contract is between us and the volunteer fire department. And just to clarify, in case the public is unaware of this, the MSBU assessment only applies for the two cities VFDs, it doesn't apply to the incorporated area of Appalachia. No one within the City of Appalachia or the City of Caravelle pays the MSBU, only the people in the unincorporated area that are part of that fire district actually pay the MSBU.
I did not know.
And that deals with, we would start brushing up into double taxation issues, and we can, if we were to try to require MSBUs of the citizens within each one of those municipalities, but right now, the way it's currently written, and I would recommend we don't change that, is MSBUs for the two city VFDs only applies to the unincorporated area for those fire districts, it's not charged within the municipal boundaries of those two cities.
Makes sense. I hear every day.
All right, any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I'm sorry, I wanna make sure we're doing right, did we need to vote on the EMS workshop, or no?
No, I'm good.
You just wanted to-
Yes, sir, you got clear direction, we're good. Item five, we're talking with Justin, item six and seven, I got the RCSE, they're looking for, remember? If you have any questions, you think you might be interested, let me know, Commissioner Ward has expressed some interest, I hate to put her on the spot like that, because everybody else will go into hiding when I do stuff like that, but, you know, if she's interested, I'll have to talk to Ken, and in the next meeting, we'll get you appointed, Commissioner Ward.
As long as, Mr. Chairman, none of the other ones want to, I just, I spoke to Michael yesterday about it, and, well, we texted, and I was like, the chairman's got enough on his plate, so I'll help the chairman, because normally, he gets thrown everything.
I'll say thank you twice.
So, I don't mind picking up the slack, I would do both, but I, the community action conflicts with my schedule, with the meetings, so, anyway.
So is community action.
Plus, I don't wanna take all the glory.
There you go.
You wanna spread it down the bowl.
Spread the love a little bit, yeah.
So, if, I guess, you guys reach out to me, let me know, I'll get you appointed at the next meeting, and I just need to let you know that because of the closing, we'll let the City of Appalachia handle their business, but because of the closing of the City Hall complex, whatever that is, the, there's a lot of nonprofits that were housed in there, and they're all looking for a new home, may be temporary or permanent, the only one we were able to help is the Bring a Book, Bring a Book Forgotten Coast, they are using that extra room downstairs in the Chapman Building, where the head start is, they've agreed with temp center, it's more for storage, any interaction they do coming and leaving will be when the head start is closed, so they have an agreement worked out, they're good, and they'll be there. And I don't wanna put Commissioner Crum on the spot, but I'm understanding that a lot of the others are trying to work out deals with the school district about using the district office over in East Point, that includes-
Alley Cats, the cat, yeah, those, worried about that.
The Career Source, because they're, now, Career Source is different, they weren't, because they were in that complex, they were over the Armory, and the Armory's closed for god knows how many months. Who else? The Nest, The Nest is trying to probably try their best to centralize over there.
Food pantry?
Food pantry, now, they are really, I talked to them up to, today's Monday, Tuesday, they are really looking for a home in Appalachia, but they're having all kinds of issues, because-
They have to have refrigeration.
Yes, space and refrigeration.
What about ECCC, or the Holy Family Center?
Yeah, they talked about that, and they said it's not, I recommended that, they said it's not enough room there to coexist with ECCC, because of what the chairman said, you know, the refrigeration in the room, but a lot of their clients walk, ride their bikes, whatever, to them, so they're very concerned about being in East Point for their Appalachia clients, so, they're looking.
Wish it was another way we could figure out.
They're looking.
That's the only place I could think of.
Commissioner Amison, that's one of the things I meant to ask you, they asked me about the Legion, the building, when you're like leaving Appalachia, the one-
American Legion?
Yes, so, can we talk about that afterwards? And see if we can talk to Mark and see what he thinks, and I know, I know Danny uses that as his commissary for his food van, but let's see if there's something where they could work out temporarily, at least.
Michael, maybe they're thinking too hard about that, because, just because you're using a place for refrigeration in East Point, don't mean that you can't load it up in truck and take it to Appalachia and just-
Yes, that's, that's their choice, that's, yeah, distribute somewhere here, yeah, I know, that's what they're looking at, is just, I guess, for, you know, they also deal with volunteers and so forth, so that's-
And the community center wouldn't suffice either, would it, every year?
That's where City Hall is moving to, to leave, yeah.
They're moving there.
Is that at City Hall, or the Battery Park?
Battery Park, on the thing, the City Hall.
Oh, the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are Yogi Berra's?
They started out there, where they started out, right here, middle of town.
Yogi Berra's deja vu all over again, yeah, they're moving back to Battery Park, so, yeah, but anyway, okay.
Back to the future?
But, yeah, that's what's going on.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna say, Mr. Chairman, that if there's any way, obviously, we can help these people, I mean, I obviously wanna do it, it's just we have certain buildings, certain rooms, certain things, we can't-
What kinda hurt, too, is the, I mean, the Armory on this final phase, that they just closed, and then this happened at the same time, you know, that, we could've helped a little bit more, but right now, we can't, and I think that's it, the FDC we talked about, Northwest Florida, water management, you know, every couple of years, they have their meeting here, in your meeting room, so, I will, again, add, just in case a couple of you guys want to attend, I will add that you more, you know, you guys, more than one commissioner may attend that, and I think that's all I have for you, Commissioner.
All right, anyone have anything for Mr. Merone? All right, thank you, Michael.
Silence is golden.
Yep, Attorney Schuler?
All right, Commissioners, two public hearings are scheduled for 11:00 a.m., the first one that you will take up will be the rescheduled public hearing on the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment, the second will be the public hearing on the petition to abandon a portion of St. Teresa Avenue. My first action item deals with board approval to schedule the public hearing on the PUD Evaluation Ordinance for July, excuse me, June 13th at 6:00 p.m. I just need board action to authorize that advertisement, which is-
Before we do that, I do have a public comment on this agenda item, correct? Ms. Kim?
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I wanna thank you for holding the PUD workshops, to solicit feedback from the public about the proposed PUD-enabling ordinance. I attended all three workshops, and heard what the community had to say. The only reason a developer asks for a PUD is to bypass our regular county ordinances to get lesser setbacks from wetlands, roadways, other buildings, structures, and to build multiple types of structures on a single parcel of land, and most importantly, get higher densities. Franklin County does not have the infrastructure to handle higher densities than what we're currently zoned for. At the three workshops, there was not a single person who spoke, who favored the proposed enabling ordinance. In fact, people from Alligator Point, the Alligator Point area to Appalachia and all points in between, were adamant about staying with the current 2018 ordinance that bans PUD, uh- PUDs throughout the county. Among the reasons given were the stress on the infrastructure that PUDs would create and the higher densities would create an increase in traffic and other problems that would diminish our quality of life. Everyone who spoke wants Franklin County to preserve its old Florida small-town character and not become urbanized like in other parts of Florida. At the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board meeting last week, one of the reasons cited for pushing for the PUD-enabling ordinance had to do with the Franklin County's comprehensive plan. And I quote from the agenda from that meeting, just a portion of it, and this was from county staff. "The Franklin County Comprehensive Plan makes several references to the PUD ordinance. However, there is currently no enacting ordinance for PUDs. The proposed ordinance would establish an enacting ordinance, specifically Objective 11 of the land use element, which calls for innovative land use development patterns, including PUDs. Currently, the county does not have inactive PUD ordinance and therefore needs to adopt a PUD ordinance to provide county staff with the tools to implement that objective. Due to the overwhelming public sentiment against PUDs, I'm here to ask that instead of voting today to hold a public hearing to adopt the proposed PUD-enabling ordinance, that this board take whatever steps are necessary to change the comprehensive plan and eliminate all references to PUDs to make it consistent with the 2018 ordinance and the 2018 ordinance that bans them throughout the county. All previous PUDs approved since 2018 can be grandfathered in, but no new PUDs can be developed. Now, based on today's discussion and the county looking at the comprehensive plan, I think the timing couldn't be more perfect for this idea to have some consideration and changing the comprehensive plan to eliminate all language related to PUDs, since right now we have an ordinance that bans them. So thank you for considering my idea, and I hope that this body will hear the will of the people and take action upon that and that no new PUDs will be allowed in the future. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, that is the only public comment I have, Attorney Schuler.
Okay. And again, my board action requested is approval of the public hearing on June 13th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to consider the PUD evaluation ordinance.
Okay. Pleasure to the board.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Attorney Schuler, your action item number one, we have to come back to 11 o'clock, right?
Yes, it cannot be considered before 11:00. Same thing for the public hearing on the petition to consider abandonment of a portion of St. Teresa Avenue.
Is there anything else we need to discuss about the fire and MSBU increase?
I don't believe so. I did not realize, anyway, that discussion's been held. Does the board want to discuss and schedule a public hearing on the E911 address ordinance that we've discussed on previous occasions?
So that'll probably be sometime in July, I would imagine? I mean, you can't schedule it so many at one time, sir. What time are you proposing?
I can talk a lot. I can talk a lot.
What time are you proposing to do it, though?
Yeah, July's fine, whatever the board wants to do.
Or you want to schedule it and bring it back to us for us to approve? Is that what you're saying?
We've discussed it twice.
Right.
I checked my notes, and I did not see where there was board direction or authorization to schedule the public hearing, so I'm coming back now to ask, is the board ready for me to schedule a public hearing so you can make a decision to adopt or not adopt the ordinance for the E911 address?
All right.
I'd go ahead and set it.
Question is, Mr. Chairman, do we have it in the evening? Is it something that we should have where people?
Yeah.
Yeah? Five, six?
Six o'clock.
Six? So we could do it on a Friday, or a Wednesday?
Wednesday would be a bad day. Wednesday would be a bad day.
Okay. Not on one of our meetings?
Commissioner Creem's pretty much every Wednesday.
Wednesday evenings.
That's right, Wednesday's church days, I'm sorry.
On most Wednesdays. Like tonight, I'm the one doing the speaking, so I mean, I can.
I mean, I'll defer to the board, but is this really a publicly, really attention-gathering issue? I mean, it's more of a technical, most people have 911 addresses on their buildings anyway.
We're just talking about changing the size of the letters, correct, mostly?
No. We're talking about adopting, we do not presently have an ordinance that requires the 911 addresses on the buildings. There's a process, as I understand, during the building, you know, the development or construction of a residence or a structure, but you've got thousands and thousands and thousands of them that predate.
The only concern I would see, or the only problem I would see from my area of the county is Landarch, because they have a, you know, all their partners that gather and anyway, but if you make one, I mean, if you make an ordinance, they'll have to comply with it.
Yes, the way the current ordinance draft is written, each condominium has to have their own 911 address, either on the door or next to the door.
So in the future, when we do get this, then, when they do need to do the 911 numbers, they will contact the Planning and Zoning Office for their numbers, or who would they contact?
This will be a code compliance matter. The code enforcement officer will drive around and the face, I mean, obviously, you'll give people time to, you know, give them notice and put advertisements out that it's now a requirement of ordinance. The code enforcement officer, when they see a violation where you don't have your 911 address displayed, they'll go through a compliance process, but ultimately, if people just refuse to comply with the ordinance, then they will be put through the code enforcement process and potentially charged $250 a day for the violation.
So the current process right now is that it goes to court, court issues a 911. She got that from Mark. However, the Sheriff's Department is, we discussed, I think we might have discussed it when Davina was here at the last meeting, they are slowly implementing a GIS 911 thing, so we're slowly transitioning to that. So at some point, they're going to need to go to the Sheriff's Department and have Renee issue their 911 address. Hopefully, we'll be there soon. So that's how the process will change. But I'm with Attorney Schuler on this one. This seems like one of these more of an administrative-type public hearing, not that I'm trying to eliminate the public in any way, that is not, that's not what I'm saying, but this is one of those I think we could have at 1:00 in the afternoon, you know. My opinion on Wednesday.
Would you schedule for a regular meeting day?
It's a regular meeting day.
Yeah, I believe, you know.
Just schedule during a regular meeting.
Like 11:00. 11:01. It's one of those.
Commissioners, I will say this in support of what Mike just said, and I understand the arguments about evening meetings, and I'm fine, I'll meet when and wherever the board tells me to meet, I'm okay with that, but in my experience, regardless of the time of a meeting, it's the subject matter that drives attendance. It just is. And this, to me, is more of an administrative issue.
Yeah.
But again, board direction, I'm fine with whatever time y'all set.
Just schedule for a regular meeting, as far as I'm concerned.
Do we get a motion to schedule a public hearing?
There's not a motion yet.
I don't think so either.
I'll make the motion.
We do have a motion from Commissioner Amerson.
Second about Commissioner.
Second about Commissioner Creem. And the motion was just to schedule during a regular meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I'll do so.
Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And following the chairman's directive, I will schedule this for a meeting in July.
I'll tell you this, just coincidentally, I changed the insurance companies, and that was one of the things, I had to go out there and take a picture of the numbers on my, on the house. Yeah, it was the first time I've ever seen that, but it was, you know, with all this going around with our discussion with E911 and then this come about, but yeah, I had to go out there and take a picture and make sure that the numbers was there. I don't know if that'll change anything, probably charge anymore.
Anything about item number six, sir? Or is that just informational?
Six and seven are just informational, the board has questions for me, but I mean, they speak for themselves.
All right. And then one and three are public hearings, we can come back to, correct?
At 11:00 with Animal Control Ordinance to go first.
All right. So Commissioners, before we proceed and go to another spot in the agenda, do y'all have anything else for Attorney Schuler?
I did, on the Duke, and I meant to ask you this yesterday, and I apologize.
Okay.
But with the Duke swap, that's, we're just waiting on an easement to access the property, is?
Essentially, yes. What I need from them is an answer to the question, because if you recall, when I presented the land swap agreement to the board, it was with the condition that we wait and receive the survey, so I could examine the easement to see if the easement would interfere with the board's intended use of the property as a, basically, workforce housing. I almost said the other word.
It's all good.
Yeah. The, my expectation, what was, or my concern, was I want to make sure I knew where the location of their transmission line easement was and see how it would affect that proposed use. As it turns out, that transmission line easement lies right across the entryway to the property, where the current Kevin Road terminates in some city property. The city property then provides an easement to access the Duke Energy property. In other words, it closes that gap between the end of the public road and the Duke Energy. That transmission line easement is there, and that is your access to the property. And when I contacted Duke Energy about that issue, what I received back was a, basically, a form document that said encroachments into the transmission line easement. I'm like, no, 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 no. Encroachments are not a way to have a conversation. We need, as a public entity, an easement as a matter of right for ingress, egress, utilities above, upon, and under the road so we can access the property, because if you're going to, you know, potentially develop this as workforce housing, that's millions of dollars. We can't have an encroachment that then gets ejected out of the easement at some point in the future. And so that's the conversation I'm having with Duke Energy. It may or may not be an issue with them, I don't know, but I have prodded them with a reminder email last week, after I sent the initial email two and a half weeks, three weeks ago. Their attorney was apparently out for one full week. They're working with their client, and they're going to get a response back to me, but, you know, the other access easement potentially is sort of on the north side property, but that's a lot of low-lying wetlands and, you know, most likely not buildable. So we need to take the path of least resistance, access off of Kevin Road, and if we can't do that, then I'll come back to the board with a recommendation, and you'll make a decision.
Is this, remind me, is this property where the ABC School used to be, or is it somewhere?
Just to the west of.
Okay.
Just to the west of.
Okay.
Refresh my memory, but didn't, wouldn't Duke, didn't they instigate this?
Yeah.
Ask, so to speak?
Yes, yes, yes. They approached me, and so then I started working on it, and then Commissioner Creem came on board and brought this to his attention, and he was in favor of moving forward and making sure that it was brought to the board's attention, and it's just very slowly developed over time, I will say, and I mean this in a nice way, but I'm going to use an Alan Pearce analogy that he used for a different governmental agency. It's like a great big huge battleship, it just doesn't move very quickly when it turns. So that's kind of the way it's been with Duke Energy, and, you know, they've got their internal processes, and they're, they've been, you know, checking off their boxes, but we've finally, we're at the end of this process, and then the easement issue came up when we finally got the survey. And so I want to make sure that the ingress, egress, and utilities is hammered out, clear, as Commissioner Sanders says, she wants it in writing and recorded in the public records, and that's my recommendation, so.
Thank you for asking for that. As part of what you did, that was, that wound up being a very good thing.
Yeah, well.
Anyone else have anything for Attorney Schuler?
With this, and I'll leave it alone, this isn't anything that's time-sensitive, so we'll just let them stew on it and keep knocking on the door.
I don't think it's necessarily time-sensitive, but I will continue to be politely persistent.
That's a good, right.
I like that word.
Anyone else? All right, Attorney Schuler, we are done with you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve, are you ready, or do you need a minute?
He's been ready.
I'm ready.
You don't do as much technology as Courtney did, but go ahead.
Try to keep it simple. I have a critical shoreline application for 2368 Highway 98 East in consideration of a request to construct a 1,000-square-foot dock, 1,000-square-foot uncovered dock, property located in Landarch Village. Request submitted by Macaira Construction Group, agent for Ingrid Alonso and Elian Magranat applicants.
Excuse me, Steve, I apologize. Before we do these two critical shoreline applications, is the board wanting to do them one at a time, or do you want to do both in one motion?
I just need, I don't mind combining them, but I need to ask a question about.
Ask a question, go ahead.
Mr. Steve, on this 2368, is there a house there?
I'm not sure.
Don't look like a house is there, that's the reason why I said what I did.
But there, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, they're not asking for a lift, so no power.
There's no lift or power on this one, it's just a.
Just a dock.
Yeah.
No power, no nothing, just a dock.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Go ahead and read the second one, Steve, or we're considering both at the same time?
The second one is 1569 Alligator Drive, a consideration of a request to construct a new 1,965-square-foot dock, consisting of a 160-square-foot terminal platform, a 1,522-square-foot access pier, and a 253-square-foot covered boat lift. FDEP issued joint FDEP and CORSPGP authorization on March 17th of 2025. Property is located in Alligator Point. Request submitted by Florida Environmental and Land Services, James Barrett and Elva Peppers, agent for William McMillan, applicant.
All right. Pleasure to the board.
Are we going to do one or both, Mr. Chairman?
We read both together, unless y'all want to do them separately?
I'll make a motion there for you.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders. Did anyone second the motion?
I did.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear you.
It's okay.
Second by Commissioner Warren. Any additional discussion?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, Steve, both PZ BOA board approved these as well, and there is a house on the 1569 Alligator Drive.
All right, any additional discussion? All in favor? Mr. Steve, I apologize, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Let me take a five.
Wetland setback to accommodate the proposed construction of an equipment building and access routes to the building, property located on Dog Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Suzanne Price, agent for Duke Energy, applicant.
So is this just a temporary variance?
No, it's a, they're, they're gonna build a structure there.
Right.
But it's, um, they, the whole thing, I think, is in wetlands, so I think they had to have, they, yeah, I think it had gotten approved before.
Right.
And then they, the HOA wanted it moved, but it doesn't, it has to have a variance, no matter where it is on the property.
But it's Duke Energy putting something to supply energy on the island.
Yeah, that's probably.
On Dog Island.
Which is needed.
And, and they know to go through, uh, nature conservancy, anyway, they have to do that, so that, that's really, if nature conservancy approves it, we shouldn't have no problems with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
Just for the record, and I did say this at the P&amp;Z meeting as well, historically, for a very, very long time, whenever there's a encroachment in the critical habitat zone, the board has reduced the footprint of that structure to a thousand square feet, in this case, the structure's 1,200 square feet. This is different because it's not a residence, it, this, this is a public utility, and, and so I don't think that that thousand-square-foot footprint is appropriate in this circumstance, and so therefore, we're, we're not coming back and asking them to reduce the footprint to a thousand square feet because it is a public utility and it's not a habitable structure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Pleasure to the board.
Same.
And motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's your names. All right, go ahead, Mr. Steve.
We have a variance request for thirty-four dash eight Warren Avenue, a consideration of request to encroach six feet beyond the eleven-foot allowance in the S4 district to construct a, in addition to the res, to a residential structure, the property is located in Lanark Village, Florida, a request submitted by George and Teresa Bookwalter.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner?
Just, just one question, did you have any opposition at the meeting on this?
No, ma'am, we didn't.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
All right, go ahead.
Um, is this, there other area, other houses in this area that kind of have done the same thing, so we're not setting a precedent, we vote?
Yes, in the past, these were, um, we had the, um, the, at a time, we were letting the Lanark Board was reviewing all of this stuff, and they had their review board, and when they would, they would, you know, we just went with whatever they had gone with, and there were some in there that they've allowed to that, so it would be, it is against our, the zoning code, but it is, you know, does go with some of the things that have been allowed, so.
So what you're saying is there's already a precedent that's been set?
But, I mean, it's...
That's why I asked, was anybody there in opposition?
We didn't, we didn't have anybody show up in opposition, that was just the...
And, and see, that's the problem, because if, if some of those folks knew about that, they would probably be out there complaining, that's the reason why I ask you about this. Um, I'm gonna let, allow the board to help me make the decision on this because it is a S4 district, the S4 district and, and all that, and I don't really have no problem with it, but I don't want to get into a shout match or anything with that many people, maybe not for that.
So would you...
I'm trying to be nice.
Tell me if this is what you're, are you heading towards, uh, tabling until I could find a way to advertise it more so they're more aware of it, say we'll bring it up at a...
Well, the member of the planning and zoning that's from out there at Lanark, he, he, he supported it too.
Yes.
So there must not be any, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve it.
Okay. So a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
I'll second with comment.
Second by Commissioner Ward, go ahead with your comment, Commissioner.
I just, you know, I talked about continuity earlier, if one's already done it, it's not fair to tell these people no, but we do need to make sure moving forward, consistency with this type of issue, so that they either have to come for variance or they don't have to. I know we have our special district, um, rules.
Matter of fact, we have them.
But then again, staff recommended denial, but, so that's kind of where I'm caught too, because staff recommend, with the P&amp;Z BOA Board recommended approval, but our staff recommended denial because it, it's not a use generally, by the special expect, exception permitted in the zoning district involved, or any use expressly or by implication prohibited by the terms of, in, of this ordinance in the zoning district, so that's kind of where I am, I mean, I see the point, Stephen and I talked on the phone about this yesterday, there are others that have done the same thing, but it's not according to our code, so I was, I was kind of playing this out yesterday in my mind of what to do, so I, I'm kind of at an impasse, because I, I agree with where, you know, precedent's already been set, but then I also have to agree with our staff and that it goes against our zoning code, and I was all about a while ago talking about zoning codes and that we have reasons for those things, so I...
Mr. Chairman, uh, do you mind if I ask Justin to kind of jump into the matter with, with whatever?
He's still in attendance.
Hey, Justin, would you kind of, you have any comments for that?
Yes, sir. So the zoning code specifically identifies that this district, uh, has a strict setback requirement and absolutely prohibits, uh, any type of variance, uh, from going through on, uh, the setback. I'm not sure how this was previously approved, um, but there are locations that have buildings that are, uh, closer than their setbacks would allow. My recommendation would still remain, uh, denial based on what's in the zoning code.
Even with precedent set from...
Even with precedent set, because we don't really know how that precedence was set, um, if it went through a different board and that's what the Board of County Commissions was allowing, um, you know, they may not have been looking at what the requirements were, so now that the board is looking at it, what does the board want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, um, thank you for that, Justin, um, I just lost my train of thought.
That happens.
I, I have a question, once you gather hers, her train of thought, but, uh, and I know I'm about to open a can of worms, but I gotta ask just from my, uh, what, whatever happened to that special zoning board that was over there, uh, that made these recommendations, did that dissolve?
It was dissolved by the county commissioner.
Because they were using it personally.
I see Steve over there giving me that look, and like I said, I know I'm about to open a can of worms up.
Oh, I remember what I was gonna ask now.
Do you want me to pause it?
Yes, so, so I don't forget, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know with people asking for variances, one of our things is, is there a hardship, is there a hardship, I know you denied it, but is there, from the applicant's point of view and perspective, is there any hardship that you are aware of that would make us decide on this, one way or another?
The applicant has stated, and hopefully that they're there, uh, that this is for a quilting room, and so I don't necessarily see that as being a hardship.
Is it for what?
A quilting, quilting room.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Follow up on Commissioner Amerson's question about that advisory board, um, my memory, and Mike, I'm gonna kind of look if you can remember things differently, let me know, but that citizen advisory board that it sounds like was setting these different things that are being called precedents, they weren't created by ordinance, it was just something that was created by motion of the board, um, and contrary, or attempting to be supplemental to the zoning code, but the zoning code itself was never actually amended to provide for the authority of that citizen advisory board, that, consistent with your memory, Commissioner Sanders, that's my memory.
We had that, and then we also had at a time is when the legislature enacted the, the new time limit for the billing department to approve, so they were...
They were thinking it'd take too long.
Yeah, they were taking too long, I hate to just...
Dragging the process out.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Just one person, it wasn't even the board, it was just like one person.
Some days it were two, some days it were one, yeah, so, I mean, the chairman was more blunt than myself than I was planning to be, but yeah, they were dragging out the process and putting your billing department, you know, at a risk of, you know, violating the, the, the statute.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because it's still up in air, I think I'm gonna rescind my motion to approve it and, uh...
Table?
I'm gonna make a motion to table it.
Okay.
And, and everything, because I, I just know that village good enough that there's gonna be somebody objected to it and challenging us on the S4. Thank you, Justin.
I, I have a question too, but we'll, we'll do this motion first, and then I'll ask you.
Okay, so would you have, Commissioner Sanders has changed her motion to a motion to table, do we have a second?
I'll second with a question.
So you've changed your motion to second that, go ahead, Commissioner.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, Ju, Justin, is there a way they can work with our staff to, to make a change on this, of what they're requesting to make it under our zoning code in the, in the special district? I don't mean to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer now if you, I just want to make sure that these people, you know, I see both sides, I do, but we, you know, I want to do what's right based on what your recommendation of staff is, because that's what your knowledge base is in our zoning code.
Yeah, well, if I may, if we're gonna table it, Justin, that's something you can answer and give to all of us.
Yeah, there you go.
That way you have time to make a prepared...
Thank you, Chairman.
Look at it, you know what I mean? It's being tabled anyways, so...
With, just so I'm clear, we're tabling for more information.
Yes.
And for Justin's opinion about maybe working something out, then you guys will let me know when to put it back on the agenda, correct?
But it doesn't have to, it just comes back to us, correct?
Correct.
We've tabled, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five oh vote. All right, Mr. Steve?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sanders, I will try and, once we get this information together, I will try and get it, find a way to get it out to the, the members, you know, in that neighborhood, Lanark Village.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We have a PUD ordinance review, a review of PUD ordinance for consistency with Franklin County Comprehensive Plan for Recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
So they did approve that, said it was consistent with it?
Said it was consistent with it.
And we've already taken action, so do we need to take any action?
No, this is just an information items, the board is aware that the, uh, the LPA, um, held a public hearing on this, uh, two weeks ago, week and a half ago, and they did make a determination that the proposed PUD evaluation ordinance is consistent with the, um, county's comprehensive plan, there's no action for the board to take on that, it's just for your information.
In, in reference to this, and only because I had so many questions about the LPA, I just want to make sure the public is aware, we were doing what state statute said to have a school board seat and non-voting member, but they do not have to be in attendance for the LPA to meet, the LPA just has to have a quorum, like they do any other time.
Correct.
So I want to make sure people are aware of that, because I had some residents asking me, well, if the school board can't attend, they're not gonna be able to, and I said, no, it has nothing to do with them being able to attend or not, they, they have a seat, so it's up to them to fill the seat.
Yeah.
Right, that's correct, the, the statute simply says there has to be a, uh, a school board representative.
Right.
Um, the statute allows them to be voting or non-voting, and my recommendation to the board was that they be a non-voting member.
Right, right. Anything else, sir?
Yes, I have one more thing, um, Mr. Maron and I met yesterday with representatives from DOT and Weber, they, um, we have a, we enacted, um, driveway permits required for, on all county roads, you have to have a, either a letter stating that it's not required or a permit for the, for the driveway, so everybody on Highway ninety-eight, sixty-five, and three hundred were just getting a letter because it didn't, the county didn't have jurisdiction, but DOT wants us to require a driveway permit from them to, before we issue a building permit, so...
Okay, sir.
Effective immediately, we're gonna require...
So now that, would that put a pause on everything they're trying to do with our department?
This however long the state takes to get them before they can, before they can apply to us, it doesn't, is, that's before they come to us, we don't accept it, we don't accept the application unless, till they have that.
And Commissioner, I, I was fortunate to be talking to Commissioner Sanders right before that meeting, and I told her I was, you know, where I was heading, and she said, okay, let me give you some history, and I'm sure she's gonna do that now, but apparently in the nineties, the county was doing this, and at some point, we kind of strayed from that practice, so we're basically restarting a practice we used to do, Commissioner.
What they would do, the, the property owner would submit their application to Department of Transportation, and the Department of Transportation would come down here and survey it out and look at it and make sure it met the qua, uh, the, the quality of work they wanted done, but what it was back then, it was, uh, concrete pipes and the concrete mitered end, and...
Probably stayed that way.
And that, and it needs to stay that way, because I'm gonna tell you, when you have a, when you having an accident, that's what you gotta look at, if you get, if you get going down that road and you run off the road and you having an accident in that ditch, when you hit that, just nothing but a pipe, you're hitting solid like that, with a mitered end, you kind of like roll over like that, so that's the way it was, and I've done it a couple of times, but anyway, you know, but that's what it did, it, it was a life-saving ma, uh, matter at that time, but I know, I may, I put up a, a bunch of them on this county to the east out there, but, uh, I'm glad you seen, could do that again.
What our roads is it gonna be?
So it'll be Highway ninety-eight, Highway sixty-five, and three hundred, which is Island Drive, all the way from, from the intersection by our office, all the way to the beach, where it ends on the Southern Beach.
They said no?
I said no.
That's weird.
Sixty-seven's a county road.
Oh, is it, the whole thing?
Yeah.
I thought she said it was a state road.
Not according to DOT.
Not according to DOT and, um, Weber, they said no.
Okay.
That's why I couldn't get it done, paved at one time because it's a county road, not a state road.
Their state roads are getting paved one at a time.
Yeah, a, a piece at a time. Uh, so we do have about fifteen minutes for the public here, we're fixing to take a short break, but I do want to mention to everybody, uh, there's gonna be, upcoming May thirty-first, here at Battery Park, right here behind us, Orion Skies is doing a drone showcase, I don't know if you've ever watched what drones can do, especially when you have two or three hundred of them, uh, lighting it up, doing different stuff, so they're gonna be doing that here, it's, it's a free event, it's gonna be like from five to ten PM on the thirty-first of May, right at Battery Park, uh, but it's something that everybody can attend and kind of check it out, they do all kinds of stuff, they're doing it free.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say something too, real quick, I did reach out to FDOT because they were trying to do, get recommendation for projects upcoming, not the current one now, I haven't found that out, I did ask, out of curiosity, if they were planning on resurfacing and widening Highway sixty-five at any, any time in the future, and they said tentatively in twenty-twenty-nine, they're looking at, um, resurfacing and widening, um, Highway sixty-five, so we'll see, we'll see what happens, um, and then if we can get a tower up there, that'd be even better.
Great.
Mr. Krum, and I both called that guy about it, and said, we'll see what, um...
I was gonna ask Commissioner Krum to comment on his recent conversation with, with the gentleman at Highway.
Yes, it went well, um, the day I called, they actually said, um, they were just talking about it earlier that day, and, um, he wanted some, uh, geographical location, landmarks, and he said that what they need to do is see what property FDOT owns, um, along the, along the roads.
And, uh, he was gonna get with his team and then get back to us, and if I don't hear anything, I don't know, a month or so from now, I'll call, and as I think it was Attorney Schuler said, what'd you say, persuasion, persistence?
Politely persistent.
Polite, polite persistence about it, so, anyway.
I don't know if you get politely after about ten times trying to find, there's no politely persistent, so...
But after that, then they asked for a contact, curious.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, anyone else before we take a short break? We'll come back at eleven.
Franklin County County Commission is now back in session. We're going to start our two advertised public hearings. Turner Shuler, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the first public hearing that will be conducted is a continuation of the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment that was tabled at your last meeting to a time certain, which is today's date at 11:00 a.m. And this is an ordinance regulating animals in Franklin County, Florida, repealing all other ordinances of Franklin County regulating animals, providing for area regulated, providing definitions, providing for enforcement, providing for penalties, and providing for appeals, and providing for an effective date. Since your last meeting, if you recall, or at the last meeting, the chairman, Commissioner Jones, and then Commissioner Amison had raised some issues that they wanted discussed. We've had those discussions. I have made some additional amendments to the ordinance which you have before you. The first additional amendment is not based on those comments, but it is based on the fact that the area regulated on page one, you have interlocal agreements in existence with the cities of Carabel and Appalachia Cola for the enforcement of the county's ordinance within those municipal boundaries. And I have added a provision which said it is the intent of this new ordinance that the existing interlocal agreement shall remain in full force and effects so that the board can continue to provide animal control services within those two municipalities. One of the issues that was brought up and discussed at the last meeting and was part of, the last public hearing was part of one of Commissioner Amison's issues, was the former, or the current ordinance has a provision that says that a dangerous animal that has either severely injured or killed another animal more than once while off the property of the animal's owner can then be considered a dangerous animal. And the proposed ordinance that's before you today has been amended to provide as follows. The dangerous, the definition of a dangerous animal would include an animal that has more than once severely injured while off the owner's property, another animal, another domestic animal, and there's a new provision, a new part of the definition of dangerous animal for you to consider, which says, it removes that first kill exemption and says that a dangerous animal is one that when unprovoked has killed a domestic animal while off the owner's property, provided that such action as is set forth in describing the subsections one and two of this definition are attested to in a sworn statement by one or more persons and dutifully investigated by the appropriate authority. And it should say subsections one, two, and three, so I will correct that. In other words, if an animal is off the owner's property unprovoked and kills another animal once, they then are subject to the dangerous animal process. It doesn't mean they necessarily would be ultimately found to be a dangerous animal, but they then would be subject to the process of being considered as a dangerous animal. And then for Chairman Jones's issue, he was entirely correct. I was, I'm not sure how many of you have proofread documents over and over again, but I forget what the term is. Heather Riley, the supervisor of election, I can't remember what she said. It was perfect. I wish I could remember it. But basically, you go blind, you read something so often, you just automatically fill in blanks. And the chairman was entirely correct, so thank you for that. I did leave out one of the, an entire paragraph, not a word, not a comma, an entire paragraph. And what I have added back into the proposed ordinance is a section that says if a dog is classified as a dangerous dog due to an incident that causes severe injury to a human being, based upon the nature and circumstance of the injury and the likelihood of a future threat to public safety, health, and welfare, the dog may be destroyed in an expeditious and humane manner. All of that said, there's still an opportunity for the dogs, for the animal's owner to appeal that determination and get a judicial decision on the dangerous dog classification and the destruction. But that statutory section has been added into the draft of the county's ordinance. Everything else, I believe, is the same as it was before. One of the issues that had been brought up during public comment was the issue of essentially the difficulty of getting a sworn statement. That cannot be waived. It is a requirement of state law. There's only one way to get a sworn statement, and that is you have to get a sworn statement, not notarized by a notary or a law enforcement notary. That cannot be avoided. And with that, I believe that I have addressed substantively the questions that the board and the public had. If I've missed something, then please let me know, and we can discuss it now.
Mr. Chairman, I have something.
Go ahead.
In reference to the quarantine, is that still?
Ten days from the date we take the dog in, not from the day of the incident.
And quarantine at our animal control office or facilities versus the owner?
Self-quarantining is still an option, but it will have to be on a case-by-case basis. If the board would choose to remove self-quarantine, that can be done. But I wouldn't recommend that. I would trust the discretion of your animal control officer to make the decision as to whether or not an owner can or cannot safely self-quarantine in order to avoid, you know, public expense and private expense. But it's entirely up to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I, and this is just some food for thought for the commission, about the self-quarantining, if we want to have that discussion now. I'm sure some of y'all know that we've had an issue, one of the ladies spoke at the last one, about an incident that happened with her dog, with a potential dangerous dog that come into the yard and killed her pet dog. Well, that same animal attacked a child at the first of the week.
Commissioner?
Yes?
I mean, that's an ongoing investigation, Commissioner Amison. We probably really should not be making any public, I mean, the investigation's ongoing. Let's not prejudge this. Wait and see what the investigation finds.
All right. Let me try to figure out a way to lawyer that up in my mind, or I can come around a different approach. Scratch that. We're not going to talk about anybody. But I think that if we're going to do a self-quarantine, that we at least need to have it in there to where our animal control can observe this dog a certain timeframe before we allow an animal to be self-quarantined. In other words, I would, I think I would feel better if our animal control had at least observed the dog three to five days before they allowed it to go back to that owner for self-quarantine. And it could potentially alleviate any further harm in the community or in the neighborhood. Is that a, is that a little more?
Right. Well, I think we're saying the same thing in different ways, which is the discretion of your animal control director, you know, based on their training and experience. If they think self-quarantining is appropriate for the, not only the, you know, the animal's well-being, but mainly for the public, and the neighbors, and things of that nature, past conduct. I mean, that was what I was suggesting, and if the animal control director thinks that animal cannot be self-quarantined in a manner that's appropriate for the well-being of the animal and the safety of the community, then we impound that dog for a ten-day period.
So let me ask you a question based on what commissioners asked. If I have a pet, and that my pet's causing a problem, am I self, am I allowed to self-quarantine in the same place I've not been able to keep them in to begin with?
That's my, that was my thing.
I mean, I guess that's the problem with the self-quarantine that I have.
And how do you know, Mr. Chairman, that they're actually quarantining the dog and not letting him loose like before? I mean, that was my concern. Like, how do we know? And I know it's an enforcement issue. We can't be out there every day. But if the dog's already had an unprovoked attack on an animal or a human, how do we know the owner's going to put him in a cage or what have you for, what, ten days or five days or whatever they require?
Right. Again, I am deferring to the department head to take care of those issues in an appropriate fashion. But if the board wants to eliminate self-quarantining, then now's the time and place to do it and just require impoundment by the county. And if there needs to be a further change in the ordinance in the future, then make that change and allow self-quarantining in the future.
Okay. I'll just, I was wanting...
And to kind of, I guess, put my two cents in with that. If an animal was being investigated as a dangerous animal, there's a reason why it's being investigated as a dangerous dog. It's not that it nipped someone, you know, I mean, that's, you know, it come in my yard, and my dog started fighting in the front yard, you know, something like that. I mean, this is, this is something that's done something very severe to either a human or another domestic animal. So I'm perfectly fine with eliminating the self-quarantine. Because, I mean, if your, if your dog did something, then there's a reason why it's being considered a dangerous animal, so.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. If something happens for us to have to go out there to decide on whether or not the animal needs to be self-quarantined, what's to say that that homeowner's not going to make sure that happens and the dog attacks something, another animal or human? Who's that fall on? Whose responsibility is that? And that's my concern. You know what I mean? And I'm not saying anything against our animal control staff. I trust them fully, and I know that they would make the right decision. But I just feel that we're opening ourselves up for issue if we allow self-quarantine and the animal goes back and has a re-offends. That's just my opinion. I feel like we should eliminate the self-quarantine and just impound, that's my opinion. I don't know what y'all...
Turner Shuler, is there any penalty for noncompliance of self-quarantine?
Just the penalty provided for in the ordinance, and they would have to be found guilty of that. But...
While he's looking, I believe that the way I interpret it is there's no penalty for violating the self-quarantine. But now the dog was dangerous, declared dangerous, and they wouldn't abide by the laws of how to shelter the dog and all that, then, and the dog re-offended, then they would be open for misdemeanor, potential felony, if it was something fatal with a human. But I'm just a backwoods lawyer, though. We're going...
Yeah, I mean, I share those same concerns on self-quarantine that...
But the thing is, like Commissioner Ward's getting at, is it takes, if we put something firm in there, this is the guidelines, this is what we got to do, that eliminates any room for interpretation with staff or anything about, hey, this dog, you know, might not be dangerous, then it is released back to a self-quarantine, then it does something fatal to a child, another domestic animal, or another human being, period. That it would, it just gives clear, concise lines, you know? That way, it's not a potential liability for our animal control ward of county, you know? So, I mean, I can understand that as well.
Commissioner Crum, to specifically answer your question in regard to the self-quarantining of a dog subject to the dangerous dog provisions of the ordinance, violation of that section is a noncriminal infraction. It's on page eighteen of my report. It's a noncriminal infraction punishable by a fine not exceeding $500 plus court costs. It's the same penalty for the dangerous dog violation, in other words. But what I'm hearing very clearly is in regard to self-quarantining and dangerous dog investigations, no self-quarantining allowed. Self-quarantine would be allowed in other appropriate circumstances.
Not if it's a dangerous dog. I don't think we should self, me, I don't think we should self-quarantine.
I'm not seeing any objection from any of the board members, so...
Oh, no. I mean, policies and procedures are what we're here to do, and I think it'd be, I think we're actually protecting our staff by not making a discretionary, is what I think.
Okay. I will make that change.
Well, and this is one reason why we're doing this, is to update our policies. But also, we don't have anything that's got teeth in it. So we need to give our employees something with teeth that they can do what they need to do to take care of the business at hand as far as a dangerous dog.
And not confusing. You know, every animal control officer is different, too. And one may decide this dog's danger, needs to be self-quarantined, and the other one may not, or, I don't know, it's just, there's too many variables at hand.
Well, it takes emotion out of it. If it's in black and white, that takes the emotion out of it, and then...
Yep.
All right. Anything else for Turner Shuler before we open up for public comment? Commissioners?
Yeah.
All right. So you didn't have to have a speaker card filled out, but we do have one filled out, so I'll go ahead and call on Molly Hill. Ms. Molly, please go forward. State your name. You have five minutes.
Molly Hill. My address is 1936th Street, Appalachia Cola. I wanted to bring to, I appreciate the fact that you all are taking this so seriously, as someone who was attacked by a dog right around the corner from my house. Those people actually have three more dogs now, and I have sent photos to animal control showing them in the street without a leash or being pinned in or anything. And the dog that attacked me was euthanized, so I'm sad about that for the dog. But at least that dog can't attack the children that live in the neighborhood, or an adult either. However, I wanted to bring to your attention, there is a bill pending on the governor's desk that he received on the sixteenth of May, passed unanimously by the House and Senate, that really tightens down dangerous dog law statewide. And one of the things it does require is animal control to quarantine dogs that are being investigated as menaces, and mandates a posted notice for any dogs available for adoption that have been previously been declared dangerous. So I think the state is actually trying to take care of the issue that you're talking about. But there's another dog, I mean, another dangerous dog bill called Dexter's Law that has also passed unanimously, and it's about to go to the governor's desk. So there's a lot of changes going on at the state level. So as long as whatever is passed here tags onto that, and ours will be updated to conform with the state law, then that's a good idea. What I wanted to point out, again, people are reluctant sometimes to report... What I wanted to point out, um, again, people are reluctant sometimes to report their neighbors about a dog, so they don't fi-, they won't file that form that has to be notarized. But I think animal control, uh, needs to really, when the police are called, the police need to encourage the people to fill out that form. And if animal control and the police could just, like in Appalachia Cola, you can take a form to the public library and they have a notary there. I think it costs a doll-, a dollar to get it notarized. So, if we have to still have it notarized, I think the problem that animal control has is, me-, dogs have bitten people before, but the people that have been bitten are reluctant to fill the form out, whether it's, they don't know how to get it notarized, or they don't know how to fill it out. I think the police and animal control need to kind of update the way they're handling that and, and inform the public how to do it. But thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Molly, and I will tell you, so, that's one of the things that started this process for us was the fact that we noticed a, a change to the state language that we had not updated. So, that's, that's what kinda started us in this direction.
Right, and, and now there's even more. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to comment publicly? Please go forward, state your name. For the record, you have five minutes. You do not have to have a speaker card filled out, folks.
Diana Anthony, and I live here in Appalachia Cola. Um, I wanna thank you for reviewing this and, uh, and the changes. This is a vast improvement, and I'm glad you're, you're looking at other things. Um, I just kinda wanted to know, um, if y'all had reached out to animal control and asked them how many complaints they get a week, a month? Have they declared any, any dog dangerous? Do you know what they're doing? Um, because I reached out to Mr. Davis, and he said that they've only declared one dog dangerous, and that was in February of 2021. Now, to his credit, he did say that when they address the dangerous dog issue with folks and say, we're gonna start this process, I think he said about six complaints a year, the person just says, just euthanize the dog. So, they may not necessarily have to go through the whole process because so many rules are in place that that may eliminate some of the problems just by having that discussion with folks and them choosing to have their dog, um, euthanized. But in reviewing Florida statutes, I did notice that there are training standards that these, um, animal control folks have to go through. And I was wondering, do they, do they go through this, you know, a 40-hour training on how to testify in court, how to do an investigation? Um, they have to go through a DCF training, 'cause I guess if you go out, I'm wondering if it's just, you go out to investigate a dangerous dog, if they're abusing a dog, are they abusing their children, I guess? I'm just throwing that out there. There's, there's minimum standards that they, it says that they must meet. So, I was just wondering if we're making sure our folks are complying with that so that they present their best, um, you know, they, they put their best foot forward when they come out to the public and, and deal with this. And, uh, and as Commissioner Amoson said earlier, I'm just a little, um, angry because in the case with my dog, one of the three that attacked and killed my dog has re-offended, and, uh, and the advice given to animal control was, do not declare the dogs dangerous. So, if the dogs have been declared dangerous, it would've been a whole different standard of how they have to maintain and contain those dogs, and maybe this wouldn't have happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony. Anyone else? Excuse me, anyone else in the room? This is time we're accepting public comment. Mr. Roll, please check via Zoom.
Anyone attending by Zoom that would like to comment in this matter, please indicate so by raising your hand and your device. No hands raised.
All right. Commissioners, do y'all have any other questions for Attorney Schuler or, or things you wanna discuss in addition?
Mr. Chairman, I do, actually. Um, um, after listening to the public comments, my mind, especially with the swarm or the, uh, having to have the, um, notary and, and stuff like that, it has, and this is, this may be a history lesson question, so I'll refer to our, uh, eldest counsel on this board right here. Have we ever in the past, uh, had a discussion on, like, animal control being under the sheriff's umbrella? But just because of the fact that you would have to, somebody's giggling down there. But, I mean, I, this is just one of those questions I like to ask because.
I don't remember anything, do you?
And, and I'm the last person that wants to, you know, throw everything into one, one pot, but given the fact that we have, uh, issues with this particular situation, uh, or, or whatnot, we're having to have, you know, um, and, you know, a sheriff's deputy doesn't need to have a, a swarm affidavit signed or notarized or any of that stuff. I mean, that might be something we, we might wanna, uh, have staff look into internally, see what, you know, what options are out there, if, you know, I'm just saying.
We definitely have to discuss.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to say, we can open that discussion up and at least.
Mr. Chairman, I have had the discussion as recent as three, four months back. And I spoke with Mr. Davis, and I also spoke with the sheriff. And, uh, I don't wanna go into too much detail, but, uh, since we're, this is the only time we talk about it, Mr. Davis is interested in transferring that role, the sheriff's interested in taking on that role. However, uh, there was some concern with some staffing. That's it, that's all the concern is. And I actually spoke to Mr. Davis about it the last time we had this animal control ordinance come up, because I, I spoke to him, I don't know if it was before or after this was coming up at our last meeting, but I asked him some questions, and, uh, he's still willing to do that, but he kinda wants to wait, if that makes sense. And you could call him, I don't wanna go into detail, 'cause I don't feel like it needs to be publicly brought out as to what that is, but if you wanna call and talk to him about it, I'm sure he'll explain to you his, his decision about why he wants to wait on transferring or ta-, discuss transferring.
Okay, that's mine, I mean, just like I said, whenever, um, um, I'm sorry, the First Lady, I don't have much left.
Ms. Molly.
Ms. Molly, I'm sorry, I'm awful about names, anyway. But, uh, but anyway, um, uh, whenever she had mentioned that about the swarm, you know, having to have a, a notary and, and the whole process with that, that's where my mind went to, was, well, we could probably alleviate this potentially. I mean, and I, I just would like to have that discussion in the future. Let's look at it, weigh it out, you know? Make sure it can, you know, the, the budget numbers match, too. I mean, I don't wanna sit there and, and, uh.
I actually talked to Erin about it, too, about the budget. All it would be, would just be.
Well, you're just way out ahead of this.
I, I do stuff a lot behind the scenes.
If that foot don't get healed up, we might not even have to worry, but you can just handle it all.
I just was curious about it, and I'm just, if I'm curious, I'm just gonna ask questions. I always ask questions, 'cause I can always be told no or whatever. But I, I'm always gonna research, I'm always gonna ask questions. And I, I didn't bring it up at the last one, 'cause I felt like it didn't warrant it, but since you did bring it up, and I can't tell you guys, hey, I talked to, you know, can't go, this is the point we have to do this.
That's why I brought it up, because, uh, you know, the fact that we can't call one another outside of this and discuss things like that.
We can.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Two things, well, whichever way the board wants to go with animal control, obviously, a policy decision for you all to make, but one thing to remember is regardless of whether it's animal control or the Sheriff's Department, they still have to follow the state statute and the county ordinance on animal control. That, that, that doesn't bypass those, those procedural requirements. Uh, and, and secondly, what, listening to the public comment, one thing that occurred to me, um, is, is maybe have a requirement that your animal control officers become notary publics. Is that why you have a notary?
Hey, we've got enough problem having personnel. I mean, I mean, honestly, I'm not trying to sound, you know.
They want that responsibility.
Well, it's just.
Okay, that's, that's. I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, it, no, it's, it's, we've got such a high turnover rate with parks and rags, animal control, you know?
I didn't say I had a good idea, I just had a bad idea, and I appreciate it, I'm just.
I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll say on that, too. Most of the time, when, and, and when these types of situations present themselves, 95% of the time, an officer's on, on there anyway. So, if it's like the weekend and nobody can get it notarized, then that's where the law enforcement can come in. Um, and I feel like that if it's, somebody has a hardship and they say, I can't, I don't have transportation, or I don't have this way to go to the bank or to the library or wherever to get disnotarized, can you, can you guys do your affidavit and sign off on it? As the officer, I'm sure they would do that, right? I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know how that works.
Unless we offer an attest as an option to the notary public. I don't know. Then I'll have to do a little bit of research and see. Can someone attest, can someone attest to it rather than actually having a notary public there?
Not a notary public. There, there, there's a state statute that deals with notaries and swarm statements. I'm not aware of any way to get around that by an attestation. And swarm statement seems to be, it's not necessarily defined in the statute, but in my mind, it's very clear what a swarm statement means, so.
And being a notary, I, I was a notary, Mr. Chairman, back in the day, and it's, it's, um, you're a notary, too, right, Jessica? It's not something that, I wouldn't wanna ask somebody, 'cause their job, you have to, 'cause that's on me. That's my personal, and unless we cover them from the county or something, I don't think that's a good idea. Um, that's just me, my opinion. 'Cause if you, if you sign something and you didn't do it the right way and somebody finds out, then that's on you, the person that's signing that notary, signing that.
The notary is personally responsible.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know, there's too much, to me, too much issue with that, but.
But notary is just swearing, swearing or affirming that the person put a document out. We, we can, we attest to, if it's all true, it's just saying like, hey.
This is what they said.
Yes, this is what they said, and I signed my name and the notary signed their name.
And you have to have cer-, uh.
So, I don't see where a liability fall on us on that particular part.
I was just saying, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, if, if, say I was an animal control officer and I was told it's part of my job to become a notary public, that's me signing my name. I'm not signing on behalf of the county, I'm not signing on behalf of animal control, I'm signing on behalf of Jessica Ward. And if, in a court of law, something comes back, 'cause, you know, there's all kinds of rules, which it's been a while since I've been a notary, but you have to provide ID, you have to know. I'm just saying, I, me personally, I wouldn't want that to be a part of my job. Like, you have to be a notary public in order to have this job, or especially ones that are already there, like, like, uh, Mr. Al-, Alfred. I, I, I mean, is that something he would want to do? Is that something we would require him to do, even though it's his name he's signing? I don't know, I just, I don't know, that was my opinion, I don't know.
I'm confident that law enforcement would be very helpful, as, to the extent that they, they are able and have the resources to help. I, I'm sure they would, like you mentioned, after hours on the weekends and things of that nature, they, they, I, I'm sure they would provide that public service, have every confidence.
All right. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
So moved, I'll make a motion that we pass it as being.
Okay, as it's been amended.
As amended by the discussion of the board.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm, motion to approve up from Commissioner Amoson to, uh, as it's been amended here in public discussion and seconded by Commissioner Kern. Any additional discussion, commissioners? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, may we move to the next public hearing, or does the board wanna take a recess?
What do you wanna do?
I'm good.
Go ahead and go, sir.
Okay, I'm looking, Miriam? Ah, I was looking online, I didn't realize you were live. Welcome to the South Board of the Second Judicial Circuit.
Ah, thank you.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, this is a petition for a request to abandon a part of, uh, St. Teresa Avenue that is approximately, uh, and slightly less than according to the, um, measuring tools I have online from the property appraisal office, slightly less than 600 feet in length. Uh, I'm going to, um, turn this over to the petitioner's attorney, Ms. Miriam Thornton, and allow her to make the presentation, unless y'all have any questions for me before she proceeds.
Have any questions, Commissioner? All right, go ahead, man.
All right. Good morning. Uh, so, this portion of St. Teresa Avenue was dedicated as a public right-of-way back in 1927, um, via a plat of Perkins Beach. Effectively, my clients, they are, they are the owners of 14 parcels. This portion splits those parcels in half, so there are seven to the north and seven to the south. Now, the ones to the north abut Highway 98, the ones to the south abut the beach. So, effectively, each parcel to the north is co-owned by the same person that owns the one directly to the south. So, what we're seeking is to abandon that road so that the parcels can be united where, right now, they are bisected by that portion. Now, as I said, back in 1927 is when it was dedicated, it's been about 100 years, and it has never been constructed. Um, it's completely inaccessible, and, uh, right now, it's doing absolutely nothing to service the public. Um, so, our request is that we can have it abandoned so that those parcels can be united.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just for the record, would, would you walk the board and the public through the advertising process that, that got us here procedurally, so the board is sure we're in a procedural posture for them to consider this?
Absolutely. So, the statute requires that a notice of the public hearing is published at least two weeks prior to the public hearing being held. We published that notice, um, on May 1st, so it's been about three weeks since it was published. Um, so that has been achieved. That is really the one major statutory requirement. Should the resolution that's being proposed be adopted, we will then need to publish again a notice of the adoption along with a copy of the, uh, the resolution as accepted.
And then that would be recorded in the.
For giving, yes, and finally, after it has been published, it'll be, all be recorded in the public records.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you did, when you gave them the updated, opened their agenda memorandum, updated the, uh, basic amendments, their original resolution, the board has the final version of the resolution, correct? I hope.
So, Mr. Chairman, while we're, for reference, we're looking at this, this photo here. Um, I'm confused as to what, so, the, it's all in red, so you have the parcels, I'm assuming, at the bottom. The area that's in red at the top, is that the road? That's, that's what y'all are trying to, asking for abandonment?
Um, let me see if I can.
'Cause I'm trying to figure out what y'all are asking.
I'm trying to figure out how you get access to that.
That's what I'm wondering, like, how do they even get access to that road?
That's what I'm saying, it's, it is inaccessible.
Okay. So, how did they build houses back there? How did they get back there without having access from Highway 98?
They're driving over their own parcels that are, that are connected to 98. They're driving over those to get to their, their beachfront parcels. That's why I'm saying it's a common ownership.
Can, can I, can I say something, Mr. Chairman? So, what the county has here is a county easement that is not accessible for the public to go to, the public's easement is not accessible.
Correct. The way I understand the, the, the factual basis of this request is that it is, is a public road that is platted on a, in a, a subdivision plat that was recorded in the public records, she said in 1927. I'm not sure about the date, but I know it's extremely old. It's in, I believe, plat book one, page seven. Um, and the instance here i- is that it's platted but not opened, and that, that happens throughout the county. I mean, we have so many plats where you have, even on St. George Island, um, you, you have. Remember that litigation we went through with Alexis Marketing back in 2004? Um, one of the things they were trying to claim is that the ownership of 17 street ends that ended, uh, in the public beach fronting on the Gulf of Mexico, claiming that, uh, although they had been dedicated, they were never opened, and therefore, they were trying to claim ownership of it. We, we litigated those folks successfully for years, but the point being is that it was a platted subdivision with a road network, some of the roads have been open, some of them have not, and that's, that's the same case here with St. Teresa Avenue, it was planted, but it's never been opened.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, is, and we've had people in here before in the past with abandonments that have been, you know, pretty vocal about the county not abandoning, uh, the public's land or public's access. But my thing is, is this, is you, to, to access. the public's land, or public's access, but my thing is, is this, is you, to, to access the people's easement, the county's easement, which is the people's easement, you would actually have to go across somebody else's property to get to it, though. So there's no dedicated access to that easement from ninety-eight. Is that?
Well, well, there is, but it's much further back to the.
So this runs further, that easement runs further than just this?
Connects to the east.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, now, now, now.
Don't you have a question?
See, because that's, that's what I was wondering, is it, does that easement extend further east and west than what it's just shown right here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out. Because it's kind of, from, from what I'm looking at, it just looks like the easement's landlocked.
That's what I was, that's what I was confused, and even looking at, when I was researching this before this came up today, I had the same question about, well, might as well ask it while I'm there, because, um, I know Attorney Schuler is knowledgeable, but he might not be able to, I mean, I don't know.
Attorney Schuler, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
And I can't remember your name, so.
Miriam.
Okay. So you asking, is it six hundred feet?
Yeah, it's about half an acre.
Half an acre, is, and that, and that, that's all over right there, or is it less?
It's much less. So further to the, the west, um, it's going to be the seven parcels that are highlighted furthest to the west.
Which would be this side.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, please, if you will, uh, this has got me buffalo, because if you look at the property, and I'm assuming this is coming off the property appraisers', uh, map, I mean, it shows the county easement right there.
That's, that's filed.
But all these, but yeah, but, but look at, look at all the properties, there's no easement disidentified on that. It looks like those are all, you know, privately owned property.
See, what it is, St. Teresa Avenue goes from the west side of St. Teresa, all the way over to almost, uh, bay, bay north. And that's what it is, on the west side of St. Teresa Avenue, it's opened up because people have properties on both sides of the road. On this particular property, the, the property is owned from, well, before it was, um, you know, they didn't own all the way down from ninety-eight to there. That's what's happened, they went and bought that piece of land between where the county easement right-of-way is, or where the right-of-way is to ninety-eight. So they own that land now, and before, they didn't own that land before, but in the last year or two, they have bought the land from St. Joe Company. So now they want it contiguous, they want to do away with the easement, and they want, they want it to be contiguous. They want it after being public property, and it be contiguous from ninety-eight to the water. But see, on the west side, you've got, it, it's platted different out there than what it is on the west side. The west side, you go down St. Teresa Avenue, and you've got houses on your left, and you've got houses on your right, on St. Teresa. Now, I can remember when a part of this was opened up, but in, and, and the county used to keep it up around Wilson's Beach cottages and stuff like that. But then at the point, there was a point that people didn't want you messing with it. And, uh, so the county always has recognized that that is a county easement in there, and it always has been, so that's where you're coming from on it. But this is a continuation of a road.
I, I understand, but I'm just trying to get clarification on this, because if we look at what we're presented right here, look east and west of that, it, it, there's, I don't see an easement going through any of that, I'm not, you, you see what I'm.
We needed, we need the bigger picture to show how St. Teresa Avenue is all the way through, it, you, you got just.
So that is an easement up there?
Yeah, there is an easement, it's further to the west.
Okay, I mean, it just doesn't show up here.
The dead end of the road, correct?
Yes.
That's the dead end of the road.
Yes, well, I do.
Okay.
But it goes all the way to the west.
Right, it goes all the way over here, I should, just by this.
I, I'd seen that one, then I seen this, and that's why it, it confused me, because, okay, all right.
That's the reason why, it, it looks like it's just landlocked and not going nowhere, but that's not, that's not the thing, it's a part of the easement, it goes all the way through St. Teresa Beach out there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I don't know if anybody could answer this, um, and if not, that's okay, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but precedent. Routinely, is this something that in the past we have done, or? I, I, I just, I know I've got people in my, my district that would love the county to take over a road, and we got people wanting to give, you know, take it and have it for themselves, I just, I, and, I mean, is it, if we just hypothetically say we approved this today, does that mean that the county, obviously, emergency services can still go down there, but anything that they want to improve, say, God forbid, a hurricane comes and the road gets obliterated, they can't come before the county and say, hey, you need to come fix our road, because it's a private road at that point, right? Do these, do these property owners, I'm sure they're aware of that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, but, um, just to reiterate, there, there is no road, it, it was never constructed.
And don't say never, it was a road at one time. Don't never say never, because it, it was a road at one time, I can remember.
Gotcha. Just hypothetically, if you could explain how these people access the property, they're coming from ninety-eight, they purchased a piece of property on, on those seven parcels there to the west, correct?
Yes, and you can see the road's kind of going down them.
Okay.
That's, they're driving along their own parcel to get to their beachfront parcel.
Okay, so what about the ones further, further, I guess it would be the east?
I am not positive how those are, those people are coming in, I'm assuming it's that very edge of that bit of St. Teresa, it looks like it hooks up, and they're coming in that way.
Whose property is that that they're cutting across? It's going to be a whole other kind of.
Well, now, you go way back, now, this is a, a thing, see, and I'm going to give a little history on it, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, can I do it?
Go ahead.
This is, this has always been down there, I mean, this is the way it's always been. The people, the people have always had their land, I, I mean, their lots, and they live on, on the water side. But they never did own this out here, because that was always part of St. Joe land, you see? So you see all the driveways?
Mm-hmm, the roads, they made?
Those are roads.
Okay.
And see, most of your time, like, down there toward, uh, Mr. West, Weston and all them, they used to have a road that goes in there, and it goes different ways, and they used to go this way, that way. So they had access to the property, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and it's all their, their own property that they're going across, essentially.
That's right, that's right, they use St. Joe's property to have access to the lots, that's the way it's always been, for a long time. Now, I can remember back when Wilson's Beach cottages was going in, they used to do the fox hunts out there, that's a long time ago. But it used to be, uh, the road, still there, the road bed's still there, too, uh, it's just not cleared out. But that to the west is cleared out, and it's maintained by the county, it's just part of the same road system. But they access it like that, they, they have, that's those roads going into there that you go by and see them.
So, Commissioner Sanders, I see what you was talking about, it go all the way to the west still.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question would be, in a few months or weeks, or sooner or later, you know, it's going to stop coming before us and asking for an amendment on.
The other.
Or the other side. I don't know, it's kind of.
That's why I was.
Commissioner Ward was just saying.
Yeah.
I can see some of the road, but again, it looks like everything, it looks like this has already been abandoned, because if it's not, then that right-of-way goes right through somebody's living room, a few living rooms.
It does.
Uh, and then when I look at the east side of it, it looks as though it's been abandoned there, too, that's what I'm trying to, you know, figure that out, because there's not a dedicated right-of-way that runs back to ninety-eight from either corner. You know, not a, not a county easement, that's why it's, it's what got me confused here, but, uh. So, Turner Schuler, if we know, these properties over to the left on that picture, it looks like the, the property lines run all the way to the water.
That's what I was just looking to look at.
Has that already had an abandonment of the road?
I do not know.
I believe so, and there's a couple more instances of that, I believe, kind of to the west, um, where, when you pull the legal descriptions, part of the legal description says, you're starting at an abandoned road, St. Teresa Avenue. I cannot tell when it was abandoned, but there are quite a few where it's part of the legal description. But once again, it's so old, uh, it, I mean, it could have been back in the forties.
Because that was my question, too, was, were the lots together, because it looks like there's, like, a lot at the top, and then property at the bottom, and it's one big lot.
I think what happened is, what the goal is here, was that at one time, it went all the way through, but they wanted the contiguous parcel, and they combined them ultimately.
Does it share this, that the easement still?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, that's what I was asking about.
I think whoever drew these lot lines back in the day, um, because it's kind of weird how it's set up.
And all these accesses run through multiple properties that they're, they're currently using to get there.
Right, uh, they are technically their, their own parcel, if, if that makes sense. The ones to the north are owned by the same person that owns the lot to the south.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just, what I'm getting at is, is like, the house, the second house from the left, huh, they, they drive across two other properties before they actually get to their house, you know? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They have to share, I guess, that, uh, ingress egress with their, with every neighbor. I just, I, wow.
Well, it's, uh, unless you have any other questions, it's a pleasure, Board, what we're going to do, I mean, I, there aren't so many questions we can ask. But before that, we'll do public comment, but I mean, I mean, it's, there are only so many questions you can ask. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, any public comment? You do not have to have a speaker card filled out, we do have one filled out, we'll go to that in a minute, because it's via Zoom. Anyone here wishing to comment publicly on this potential action that the board has been asked to undertake today? All right, Mr. Brown.
What's the name, sir?
John Bixler.
If you would, sir, indicating your device, did he put a phone number on that email, Commissioner?
Yes, six, six, double O.
Okay, I know where he is, okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Sir, if you would unmute your phone, and the chairman has recognized you to speak on this matter, but your phone is muted at the moment.
Commissioners, just so you know, Mr. Bixler's one of the petitioners.
Okay.
It is still.
Hello.
There you go.
I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I'd like to introduce myself, my name's Jack Bixler, John Bixler, um, I'm Miriam's client, and, um, I'm the one who assembled the buyer group for the seven lots, and we, uh, there's a, that land was Wilson, we bought it from Richard Wilson, it was not from St. Joe. And the, the current part of the road that we're trying to get abandoned is landlocked, it would require crossing private property to access it. And, uh, it's the woods, it's woods, there's trees, you can't, probably couldn't even drive a golf cart down it. So th- those are the circumstances here, the reason that we're doing the five hundred to six hundred roughly leg is because that was the, uh, the part of it, that's where we all bought the land in ninety-eight, as Miriam has described. So basically, we're, we're trying to abandon a, a, a small portion of an entirely fully landlocked, uh, never-used road. And so I just wanted to make sure that those details were clear, it would require somebody, uh, par, like parachuting in from a plane to get to it, or, or trespassing.
All right, anything else, sir?
And, and so it stops, it stopped, there's an end cap on this section, so, all of the, uh, you know, there's two different, um, sets of details for folks that have gone through this St. Teresa Avenue over the years. One is, there's access from ninety-eight, like Wilson's Beach cottages, and then the other one is, it is a driveway on the west. There's areas that are similar to what we've got behind our house, uh, that people have probably wanted to abandon from time to time, and have tried. Those other circumstances, a lot of times, they had access from ninety-eight, like the Wilson's Beach cottages example, it's, it's that. There's, technically, this county road actually has an entrance to it. Um, what makes our case unique to most other areas of St. Teresa Avenue is, again, it's not, there's no access to the public. As regards the driveways, we all have our own driveways, and prior to us buying this ten acres, um, Mr. Wilson, who was the seller, you know, he would just allow us to have driveways over his land, he didn't care, you know, I guess there could have been an argument made for prescriptive easement. Th- those are all past matters to us now, though, because we own, you know, we all own several acres, um, going from the beach to ninety-eight, and we've got this old, you know, non-used, non-maintained road cutting through it. So I just wanted to be able to make sure that everybody understood, you know, clearly what's going on here with the, uh, with the lack of public access, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Looks like we got some.
Mr. Brown, is there anyone else via Zoom that would wish to comment publicly?
The chairman is calling for anyone, anyone else that would like to comment on this matter, attending via Zoom. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have concluded public comment, Commissioners, it's back to us. I, I will say, I do have one question, and, and ma'am, maybe you can help with this, that come up, as this other gentleman was talking. If this is something that the county did do, where's the property going to be attached to?
What do you mean?
Or, do they, so are these all different property owners?
So, the parcels to the north, co-owned, well, it's the same owner as the one to the south.
Yeah.
Is all of these parts?
For each, correct, they're a common ownership for, correct, all seven, and then on the bottom, all seven, so. Essentially, because the goal is to be able to come, to wipe out that portion of St. Teresa, and then they would have long, thin parcels, just like the ones to the left.
So they'd all be long, thin parcels?
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to get at. Because on the drawing we had, I guess because you have to show the road there, it was unclear about how it was going to look afterwards, that's why I was asking.
That, it, it would look just like the ones to the west.
It's only the question I have, Commissioners.
Looks like there's some existing structures all in that right-of-way.
Yeah, just a couple.
I'm talking about all the ones that they're actually asking for abandonment on, I'm sitting here looking at. Oh, lower one is.
But it's, it's up to, up to y'all, what y'all want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions about this, I've known it's been a, a, a county easement, county road, whatever you want to call it. I'm just not, it's a public, piece of public property, is what it is to me, and that's the way I look at it. And I'm going to say that we need to deny it because it's public property, and it has to serve a public, a public purpose. And, um, I make a motion to deny.
Okay, so would you have a motion to deny by Commissioner Sanders?
I'll second.
Would you have a second by Commissioner Ward? Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a five oh vote. Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your time. Turner Schuler, that concludes the public. Turner Schuler, that concludes the public hearings, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Commissioner comments?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I got just something real quick. I know we had talked that meeting's passed about the TDC, um, vacancy on the board. Where are we at with that? Have we gotten any updates on any of that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, is that, is that me, the last time we brought it up publicly, I thought I had a question to ask you, and I never, may have never gotten around to it, is that on me? Did we resolve everything?
Well, the, the question was, I'm trying to remember.
Can the person doing, be on the board that is doing business with the county?
There is a process, there is a process. So what it would entail was, I'm trying to remember, what it would entail is that whoever it is, that individual, would need to, uh, there's a, I think the state requires a paper to sign, correct?
Do you want me to weigh in, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please do.
Okay.
You might, you wrote me a veteran name.
The, the Chairman had asked the question, uh, a, a few meetings back, and the answer was that an individual doing business with the county, in this case Advisory Board, there is a state statute under Chapter one twelve that provides an exemption to the conflict. Is there a conflict? Yes. Is there a prohibition doing business with your own agency? Yes. Is there an exception to that prohibition? Yes, a very limited exception, um, for persons who want to be on an Advisory Board, uh, which is what the TDC is. They, they only provide advisory opinions with the County Commission, the County Commission makes decisions. Under that state statute, there is a process, as the Chairman was alluding to, and essentially it's a financial disclosure form that the Commission on Ethics is, is consistently required for, my research went back forty years, it's the same form number, I'm assuming it's the exact same form. I haven't pulled one from nineteen eighty and compared it to twenty twenty-five, but it's still the Form Number Four, is my recollection, the Form Number. But in any event, uh, whatever form is, is promulgated by the, the Commission on Ethics, uh, that financial disclosure form has to be completed by that applicant who is doing business with the Advisory Board, that information's then brought to this, this commission, and then you make a, a decision up or down whether to grant the waiver. If you grant the waiver, then the statutory exception applies and they can become a member of the Advisory Board. If you don't grant the waiver, then they're prohibited and they can't be a member of the Advisory Board. But that's the process. The additional question was, um, you know, does this, uh, apply to anyone else? And my understanding, uh, is that it does not, so as far as I'm concerned, that, you know, it's up to the Board, or this individual, I should say, whether they want to apply or not. If they apply, then they have to follow the process, as I laid it out for you here.
Mr. Rowan, we've already had people apply, haven't we?
No, I don't think so. No, I didn't run an ad, Commissioner, because we were waiting for this to be sorted out. I, I, no, to answer your question, yes, I've had people just because of our discussions of the same couple, but I do need to run an ad for it, and it will be, as far as I know, it can be either, we're at the point we can run either collector of tax or non-collector of the tax, right now, we have that, that flexibility to run for both.
It's at large, right? Uh, it's an at-large?
Yeah, yeah, they're technically at-large seats, yes.
Okay, so, but we're in Commissioner's comments, so we really can't do much of a-
I can, I can run an ad, I just wanted to make sure that we had answered all the questions and checked all the boxes.
So in addition to that, if we're going to do that, if, ask the Board, is it okay, those that have applied, if we can include them in it, even though the app hasn't been run? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because you have the information to contact them, so.
Yes.
What you're saying is they don't have to reapply, I think.
Right, right.
I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah, because we need that other member, we've had a couple of times, we barely made calls.
So, I, oh, let me be clear. So we, we, just I understand, we can, uh, the last time we ran an ad, there were some people that were not selected, can I automatically include those, or do I need to contact them and see if they wish to be considered?
See if they wish to be included.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
No, that's, I'm sorry, I've got people in between that because of our discussion that's set in.
Same thing, see if they wish to be included.
Okay.
In other words, they don't need to refill out the form-
Okay.
-just because we're advertising.
All right.
But we do need to get that.
Yeah, they decide they don't want to, and pull it, then pull it.
I will.
And we, we are meeting today because they had other things going on with the members.
Uh-huh.
But starting next month, we'll be back to our schedule where there's a commission meeting one week, there's TDC the second week, and then the commission meeting the third week.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll run the ad and check with past applicants.
Anyone else have Commissioner comments?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do, it's about, uh, it's more of a question or something, we need to find some information out on is, uh, uh, the, the cyber issue, but, uh, it was brought to my attention that we need to find out if we have any insurance in place. Uh, I believe that would be more of a-
Okay.
A hospital question, that you may want to reach out.
Okay.
And see if we have any type of cyber attack insurances in place, that way we're not liable.
Cyber security insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
That's, that's just something that we need to be aware of. If, if, if we have that place, and if we don't have that place, it'd probably be a good idea to start moving in that direction, because this isn't getting any better, because I mean, we were talking about this before the meeting, not this, but we were talking about hacking, you know, and we've all gotten emails from, uh, constantly.
See, I, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, that's just something to discuss, and that we have been having and we need to continue to have, because we need to make sure that not only the hospital's safe, but our, we're safe.
Yeah.
But you and I had a conversation about that last week, so.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just to clarify, nothing happened, I don't know if that might have came out wrong, but there was nothing on our, uh, hospital or our side of things, it was something that, that came from another source that was doing business with us, but, but ju, that's just for the public, because I didn't know if that come off like, uh, we'd been hacked in the county, that's not the case, but in, in the past, I have brought up th, this, uh, especially with the hospital, just because the fact that some neighboring hospitals have been, that had security breaches, uh, it just, you know, that even justifies moving in that direction further.
Yeah.
Because here's somebody that we do business with that had a security issue, and, uh, but, but we, we may want to check in, if you would, and, and see if we have insurance in place, that way we're not, uh, liable to, to anything down the road.
We're eventually gonna have to have cybersecurity.
Well, I believe they're working on it, it's just been six, seven months we've been working on it.
I'm talking about all of it.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, I bet I don't do any, any online banking. I do not trust it, I am not doing it, my money is my money and I don't want nobody getting it.
See her at the grocery store writing that check.
It's under her mattress.
Now, Sarah, the cross is saying that now.
She's the one at the grocery store writing that checkout.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Yes, I have one, uh, two. Um, one is, um, I know we'll have this discussion later down the road, but, uh, I was able to obtain some information around neighboring county about, uh, insurance, so, um, but I know we'll, we'll have a discussion here, you know, budget. The other thing is that I, I had a, uh, conversation on the way I just come to the meeting, brought my attention, so I guess we, uh, kind of need to figure this out, Attorney Schuler or Michael Morone, but, um, evidently, there's, I don't even know if we can do anything, honestly, evidently, there's mention of a, uh, sports team coming to St. George Island, St. George Island, uh, not only, not from our county, but, uh, out of state, and I guess wanted to set up on a right of way and, uh, collect money, or do fundraisers like some of our local sports teams does, so just, I don't know, like I said, I think that's what a state right of way, and of course, the other side, maybe county, but that is , uh, starting to-
I, I, I know the draw, let me say this.
Okay.
I know the draw with where people are, but I think all of that is a horrible idea. I think you, and I, and I support our local teams, but them having kids standing on the side of the road is a horrible idea to begin with. That, we need to find a different way to do all of that all together. But yes, that is a problem.
Have you heard of this?
I have.
Yeah, okay.
If they're coming from another state, yeah, that's definitely a problem.
Today.
But, yeah, but they're doing it because it's monkey see, monkey do, is the problem. But I, I think you're putting kids in a, in a not good way to have them standing right beside the road, trying to collect money. There's gotta be a better way to do this.
Especially on weekends like this weekend.
Especially when it's busy and it's already crowded anyway, uh, you know.
Why, I'm just confused, why would a team from out of state want to come to St. George Island to collect?
I can answer that. Because in the past, if, Mr. Chairman, I can explain that.
They can't do that, and they're, I don't know where they're from, but I mean-
Because in the past.
And I don't, I'm, I'm just gonna be not saying.
In the past, there has been local teams that's been over there-
Oh, I know that.
With the buckets, but these people that are visiting, and it's, I guarantee you, if you go and look at it, it's probably travel organization, travel ball, those same people also clientele that visit down there, and they're looking at it and said, wow, these kids just made a, a good amount of money, about something, but, uh, but anyway, uh, and then they, uh, you know, well, next year, whenever we go, we need to go down there and, and, because it's a good little area where you got, and people are generous, I mean, people that come here are generous, local people's generous when it comes to kids. And, and that's where they've seen it, and they're just, it's, uh, monkey see, monkey do, basically.
But if they, but if they can't police themselves and make sure those kids are being safe, they might not continue to be able to do that at all.
Yeah, we have to talk to the sheriff.
Uh, because I know, I mean, I had, I had a kid do travel ball, my oldest one, he was doing travel ball, the basketball team he was with from Tallahassee, their tournaments were in New Orleans, Miami, and Atlanta.
Mm-hmm.
You know who, where did the money come from? Hundred percent parent fund.
Yeah.
They would not allow you to do fundraisers. If your kid's gonna be a part of travel ball, you gotta foot the bill for travel ball.
Uh, me personally, I was never a fan of the buckets with the kids, I mean, go have a fish fry, go do something.
Car wash.
But don't just sit there and, and-
Especially in a busy weekend, and that three-way stop, right?
That's not a good idea.
That three-way stop is hard enough to manage on a busy weekend sometimes, because everybody thinks that they got to the stop sign first.
Yep.
You know, so, you know, I, I saw the thing online, the reels, when the guy, one guy said, well, I was waiting for the sign to change color to green before I go, so, you know, it's just-
I always get who gets their first gun.
Yeah, I think that's the way it is in the book, in the book, that's the way it is.
So we might have to talk, I guess what I'm heading, and this might be a, a discussion with the sheriff, uh, about-
It might.
Saying, okay, Sheriff, we need to, you need to step in here and say, look, this is a dangerous-
We definitely need to get his advice.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's getting unmanageable. And, uh, you know, it's not, not, nothing against the parents, we support the teams, but this Board goes above and beyond supporting teams.
Yeah. Trust me, we do.
Anyone else? I would like to remind everybody, even though I can't attend, they're doing the, ARPC's doing their resilience collaborative tomorrow in Tallahassee. I don't know if you're gonna be able to attend, but there's also a hybrid option available if somebody's just wanting to attend via Zoom, but they're continuing to work on resilience[1709.72]